The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February Board meeting. I would like to start off with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening, McCoy.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Hubble.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Sitnikow.
Here.
All right, all six board members are present. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next on the agenda is the mission statement. Does anybody have it in front of them? I forgot to see how to tell if someone would be willing to read that. Anyone who has it handy. First one. Don, are you ready?
I can do it.
Thank you, Don.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. And then finally, on this part of our agenda, is the collaborative commitments. Again, these are statements that the board drafted a number of years ago in terms of ways that we want to interact with each other in order to have efficient and well-run board meetings. And anyone who's interested in reviewing those, they are posted in the agenda. All right, that takes us to the open forum portion of our agenda. And first up is the inner-city student council report. And so I will hand that over to President Noah Becker from West High School and Diana from Preble High School.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, I got the right one. Anyways, at the district level, the ICSC recently had its first quarterly meeting with some of the board members. And the fall sports season that was delayed due to the coronavirus is starting to prepare for starting up here. At East, they had a successful students versus staff trivia contest. And their FFA has been able to meet in person, Future Promise America, and has been covering organizational topics. At the Don Dewey Academy of Learning, the STAR testing and ACT Aspire interim testing has gone on as just one of those ways to show student progress throughout the year. The Scrib fundraiser has concluded. I didn't get an official part of it, but it looked like that was successful. And a weekly better-together challenge is starting to be issued in the newsletter, which is a challenge to be done by JDL students and presumably staff on social media. At Preble High School, the AP United States Government Constitutional Literacy Contest was successful. The Preble Key Club has started to meet, and Preble's bowling team has seen success in some of their recent matches. At Southwest, their Link Crew is hosting a freshman snowman contest. And they had a successful showing at DECA's regional level competition. The Southwest Chapter of Stink Cancer is hosting a wish list drive for El Chusa House. At the NEW School of Innovation, there are opportunities for student orientation for each cohort and there are orientations for new NEW students that have been put on the schedule. And a schedule change to match, to more closely match the blended model schedule has been implemented. And finally, at West, the academic decathlon had a good showing at regionals with a variety of awards won by multiple of our members. Various small groups of students have been able to return to the school building as part of small study groups. And finally, keeping with the theme, Student Council has organized a snowman contest with submissions now open, other than his note. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much, Noah. All right, and then finally, in the open forum section, we have the public forum. We have 12 people who have registered to receive calls tonight. Just as a reminder, anyone who's waiting for a call, you'll receive a number, a call from an out-of-state number based upon the Zoom platform that we're using. And so Josh will go through the list in order that they were received. We'll make a phone call. If someone doesn't answer, we'll come back to them in the rotation. All right, thanks so much, Josh. Mr. Conop, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Okay, my name is Rick Conop. I live at 2799 Alloway Avenue, and my son attends Preble High School. First of all, I wanted to thank the school board for their work during these trying times. I know that you have been attacked by some very vocal critics, but your goal and determination to keep students and staff safe has been admirable. I am writing, I am calling, actually, to express my concerns related to how the return to the classroom criteria will be met and enforced. Social distancing will be a challenge, and I know the school administrators will do their best to comply with the CDC recommendations. But my primary concern is the masking policy. How will it be enforced? Who will enforce it? And will noncompliance referrals be considered a major or minor policy violation? I believe it would be best to have the district implement a strict policy and communicate that policy to parents prior to the return to in-classroom learning. I also believe that unless a strict, clearly defying policy is put in place and clearly stated to parents with specific consequences, that you are setting the individual schools up for significant problems. This is a school safety matter and must be treated as such. Sending kids who are not compliant to the office to have them talk to about mask wearing and then simply being sent back to the classroom is a recipe for disaster. I believe a zero-tolerance policy would seem to make a more effective policy, especially for students who do not comply after a gentle reminder. Make no mistake, there will be students who fight this policy with their parent support. One of the strongest advocates for a return to in-classroom teaching is the face group group Open Green Bay Schools. There are members there who are stating clearly that they will not make their children wear masks, and they will fight this policy. This small but loud group has attempted to bully their way back to school for months regardless of the health risk. As you have all experienced, these people will be a thorn in the side to anyone who refuses to go along with what they want. In order to protect your school staff from a barrage of complaints, wouldn't it be best to have a district deal with parents, have the districts, excuse me, deal with parents who disagree with the policy versus having each principal having to deal with it? I would equate it to the statewide mandate. Local businesses prefer to have the vast mandate come from governor others rather than having it to be a business decision. Why? It is much easier to tell someone that the policy is beyond their control. It would be a lot easier for your staff to simply refer complaints to the district rather than having arguments or discussions with parents who refuse to have their children comply. To me, it would seem that to ensure that, like everyone, that so that everyone's on the same page, excuse me again, that the board should consider working with the district to enact something like this. For grades pre-K through 2, teachers should just simply gently remind students to wear their masks. For grades 3 to 12, students should be given one warning for noncompliance. A second violation should result in a trip to the office, a call home, and expulsion for today. All parental complaints regarding masks should be referred to the district office. Parents who cite health-related issues regarding mask wearing, other than students with special needs, should be informed that their only option is virtual. These criteria should be sent to all parents prior to the school year. Failure to do this or something similar is going to have repercussions for your school leaders. I envision multiple calls each day with parents wanting their children to have special exceptions to mask wearing. It is naive to think there is not a group of parents out there who are going to fight this tooth and nail. They are picking their battle one at a time. Number one, get the kids back to school. Number two, fight the mask policy. This group wants nothing less to a return to January of 2020 and will not stop badgering the district or schools until they get their way, regardless of the fact that this is not an option. In closing, I understand that what I'm opposing to some may seem harsh or beyond the board's control. To that, I say it is better to fight the battle up front than to have to fight dozens of individual battles. If implementing these ideas is beyond the scope or the authority of the board, then the board must work with the district to have these ideas implemented. It is obvious that some parents are going to fight doing the correct thing. To ignore that and not prepare with a plan and consequences is going, is doing a great disservice to your district's students and staff. And again, I want to thank all of you for your service to our community. You've had a tough road to go here. You've done an admirable job of doing the right thing, and thank you.
Thank you very much for calling, Rick. We appreciate it.
Take care.
Erica, can you hear me?
Yes.
Could you mute your computer in the background, please?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Okay, my name is Erica Berman. My address is 1340 Brill Coin Way, Green Bay. My kids attend Fort Howard District. I am calling to voice my concerns about why I believe that kids need to be back in school. I have an 11-year-old son who is struggling terribly with mental health and with school, like he's failing. Like, he shouldn't even be in fifth grade, but here we are. Scientific data shows that there's no reason why these kids shouldn't be back in school. The cases are at 314 in the district. And it's just, it's sad, like there's scientific proof and nobody seems to be following it. I am 100% like in agreeance to kids having to wear masks because that's what we should be doing is wearing masks, like that other guy was saying. But also, I can promise that a single one of you have stayed home this entire year. I'm sure you guys have been out and about and, you know, shopping and going to bars or going out to eat, and, but our kids can't go to school, and that's really sad. Our kids should not have to suffer. And it's, you guys should be the voice for these kids, and us parents should not have to be fighting tooth and nail and getting our older people involved to try to fight with you guys to try to get our kids back in school, because that's not their job. That is your job. And it's just disgusting. I can't even describe how disgusting this is. Like, mental health is on the rise, like it's terrible. Kids are committing suicide. Depression is terrible. Like, these kids are suffering, and it's not fair. It is very possible, all of our districts around us have been going back to school, so it is very possible for them to go back to school here as well. And I don't know why you guys don't care that kids are being ripped from the district and put elsewhere to get an education because our kids are not receiving an education, and that's not fair to them. That's not fair to anybody. So I'm going to let my 11-year-old speak about how he feels about why he deserves to get to go back to school.
Hello? So I really think we should be back in school because virtual learning has been tough for us. And I, and like, I don't think you guys understand the science because science is true. I'm not doing good in school because of virtual learning, and I've been, I haven't, and I've been depressed. And it really does not help that I can't go back to school. I deserve to be in school, like, like every other, other people out, other than this district. Because I want to get a good education, but I can't get a good education because I'm not in person. I'm not like, I can't get the help I need. So please let us go back to school. Thank you.
Oh. Didn't get to say goodbye. Thank you for calling, Erica. We appreciate it and for having your son speak as well. Sean, can you hear me? Sean, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, thank you very much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Yeah, my name is Sean Conway. My address is 614 Mather Street, Green Bay. My two kids go to Fort Howard District. And I just wanted to, first of all, thank Rhonda and Andrew for fighting for our kids, speaking up for our kids. Some of the board members haven't been taking us seriously that we want our kids back in the school. It's very sad to see and to hear how these kids are doing and then seeing it firsthand with my two girls. My oldest girl has been withdrawn from school now. She used to love going to school and, you know, being in part of school, being part of her friends. And now we can barely get her to do her assignments. And now we just enrolled her into counseling, and this is, this should not be happening. She should not be having to go see a counselor because she can't go to school and she can't be with her friends. I understand that we want to protect the teachers, and I'm all for that, but again, that's what the money was for from the COVID plant. It was meant to put in new ventilation systems, other, you know, strategies to put in for spacing for the kids to be in class, which, you know, Fort Howard has done. They replaced all their windows. They got the ventilation systems that you guys, that was required by the CDC. And yet, none of the kids are able to attend the Fort Howard school after all the remodeling that has been done. And even the teachers are ready to get back and get their kids into school. Now, we're faced with our kids having to see counselors at the age of 6 and 11. I mean, that should not be happening, especially in the U.S. That should not be happening. Um, I, and I'm just afraid that we're going to see a lot of the suicide rate go up in our kids. And I'm hoping that that does not happen, but from the things I've seen from my kids and others, it's very scary, the path that we're going down. Not just asking that we stick to a date and we move forward with this, and we do all we can to mitigate the COVID and deal with the symptoms as they come. I just want to thank you again for your time and thank the teachers for everything they've done for us.
Thank you very much for calling, Sean. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, Denise, can you hear me? It's always the second time. Denise, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, thank you so much for calling in. Really appreciate it. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Denise Cybert. I live at 883 Elmore Street in Green Bay. I'm representing the Special Education Council tonight, and this is on behalf of them and not myself. So, good afternoon. My name is Denise Cybert, a parent representative of the Green Bay Area Public School Special Education Council. The council, the council is a representation of parents, community members, and Green Bay Area Public School employees who review current issues and trends to promote family engagement, our family engagement. Our council is currently focused on disseminating information, identifying needs, and networking with families. We'd like to send out a reminder for this coming Thursday, February 11th, to families with children with special, oh my gosh, to families with children in special education. SEEK, the Special Education Council, in partnership with the Green Bay Area Public School District, Family Voices, and Northeast Wisconsin, sorry, Northeast Regional Center for Children with Special Healthcare Needs, is pleased to present a virtual training, Did You Know? Now You Know? Please join us for this important training regarding long-term support programs, Medicaid denial, respite care, and more. The presentation is centered around families with children ages birth through young adulthood. If you are unaware of these programs or have little knowledge of how to navigate them, this will be a wealth of knowledge for you and your family. SEEK is also currently working with Family Voices to offer this training once a month and in several languages once translators become available. If you are a Spanish-speaking family, the slide presentation is available in Spanish anytime on the Family Voices website. Slides are also available in English. We would also like to reach out tonight to our IEP families who are currently struggling to navigate virtual learning for their children. We hear you. Many SEEK council members are currently treading the same waters as you are with your children. We understand and hear your frustrations. Because of this, SEEK has decided to begin production of a workshop to offer to families who are struggling with the navigation of their child's IEP. Information will be forthcoming about this workshop. If you have any suggestions of topics or subjects you'd like to discuss or talk about, please email us at sdc.gcaps@gmail.com. In the meantime, here are some helpful suggestions for you. If you haven't talked to your child, to your child's IEP team about qualifying for in-person learning, please start there. Your child's IEP team will determine if your child's needs fit the criteria for in-person learning. If you are struggling with your IEP team, please reach out to your building principal. If concerns continue, you are able to reach out to Sean Manders O'Brien for Eastside Green Bay students or Jackie Hauser for Westside Green Bay students. If you are in need of further assistance, please reach out to Claudia Hendrickson, head of Special Education, or Vicky Behr, deputy superintendent. For these resources and email addresses, search Green Bay Area Public School Special Education Department on your web browser. Please feel free to reach out to SEEK anytime with any questions or concerns regarding your special needs student. We want to help guide you and answer your questions as well as the advocates for, advocates for our families. We look forward to being a continued resource to the board and the families of Green Bay Area Public School District. And that's all I have, Eric.
Denise, thank you very much, and the rest of the Special Education Council for your leadership.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks for taking my call.
Yep, have a good night.
You too.
Eric, there was no answer for number five, so we'll move on, circle back, move to number six.
Hi, Jeff, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Eric.
Thank you very much for calling tonight. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jeff Strohman. I'm in 898 Roscoe Street in Green Bay. I have two boys, one in first grade and one in third grade at Beaumont Elementary. So I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Miller and Ms. Wes over there, doing just a fantastic job with their, with their school and their classes. So, yeah, my perspective tonight is just, you know, to call the board to, I'm glad that you've looked at reopening on different criteria. And then we've all been watching the science as it kind of moves and, and gets further defined. And science is constantly a moving target, just, you know, the content testing and empirical data collected. And I appreciate all of your guys' leadership on the board. I want to thank Rhonda for coming back to my email earlier last week, just in response to my email to the board. I just want to call, at least for you guys, to consider coming back with students, mostly of them, most of them by March the 1st. I've been watching the reports with the CDC coming out about teacher vaccinations not being necessary as a return to school criteria. In all cases, I understand the vaccine is an important step in to mitigating virus spread, you know, producing the antibodies necessary to continue to fight it and to further reduce the risk of the spread. I know our family's been impacted by the virus. I know that many other families in the district have had the virus and have recovered. I feel like now we're looking at almost being outside of school now for a year. My boys are ready to go back. Just as a personal note, you know, my dad's coming over and watching the kids as I work from home. My wife works in person at a bank, and so we both work full-time, and, you know, we're, we're stretched. You know, we need the schools to be back in. I want to have my kids back in, in a gym class. I know it's a scary thought for some people. We're watching sports taking place, so. And the hardest thing is to also watch other school districts, other classes, returning to in-person. And yet, here we are, in February, still not back in person. The other thing in response, Rhonda emailed and saying that she had voiced concerns about the forward testing at the end of March when the proposed, you know, full return is for students, most of students. And, and so I just, I want to see a return a little bit sooner. To the first caller, we talked about the Open Green Bay Schools. I could tell you, I'm a part of that group, and there's a lot of us that have diverse opinions. I'm for masking, kids masking, everyone in the school masking. I definitely agree with where that caller's coming from. And there are a lot of people that have differing opinions in that group, but our call is to consider a sooner return than the March 29th timeframe. So I really do appreciate all of you guys' leadership. Thank you, Superintendent Merly, Eric, the school board, Andrew, and Rhonda, who've been most responsive to my emails. Rhonda, thank you again. But thank you guys for your leadership. It is important these times, and I know it's not been easy for you guys, teachers as well. So we stand with you. We just want to see our kids get back sooner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for calling, Jeff. We appreciate it. David, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, thank you very much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and then giving us your address, then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Thank you. My name's David Wilson. We reside in Alloway. So thank you all for your service and sitting in the seat that you sit in. You too, Steve. I'm sure it hasn't been easy, but I just commend you for your service and taking the time and the commitment to doing what's, what's best for the community at large. So just want to start off with, I know the hearing officers on the agenda for this evening, and I'm hopeful that this district will adopt the hiring of an independent hearing officer to oversee expulsion. But I know that choosing to or not to expel students from the district is one of the harder decisions that a school board member has to make. And having the insight and support of a hearing officer to make those recommendations doesn't make the decision for you all any easier, but it does somewhat remove you from being the, you know, the jury and those that will eventually vote on whether that student will be expelled or not. I know that also you have, you know, had immense pressure to, you know, open the schools yesterday by any means necessary. We too would like our kids, you know, back in school in person when it is safe. However, we made the decision a long time ago to elect to keep our students virtually. Not that that's the best decision, however, for our family. Not that that's the best decision, however, for our family, it, it's the safest decision for us in terms of what we would consider sending our kids back to school in person, as it won't be the normal that some may expect. In the same conversation, I, I've been aware of just the, the pressure that of particular groups have put you under to make decisions that might not be in the best interest of everybody, but just, you know, their, their group. And I'm just hopeful that, you know, myself included, we can step outside of our fishbowl and, and see it from other people's perspective, because I think that's important. And, you know, as with the same approach, you know, the other issues that our district faces, whether it's the disproportionality of marginalized students, you know, the McKinney-Vento students, when they are, when they come back to school, any of those marginalized groups. I hope that that's the same kind of energy that, that the particular group that wants to open schools yesterday has towards helping their schools and helping their students and the peers of their students be successful in school, because it's not just about, you know, the kids now. It's not just about their kids now. It's about kids and families for generations from now. Green Bay School District will go on after this pandemic is passed. And I, I'm glad that you all are forward-thinking enough to know that making the best decisions in the best interest of the students now will impact students, you know, years and years from now. So I'm hopeful again that everyone in this community will just take the opportunity to reflect and think about things from other perspectives, not just, you know, swimming in their own fishbowl. Because if we, we swim around in the same fishbowl for too long, you know, we, we get caught up in, in seeing it just from one perspective and one perspective only, and it's hard to, you know, step outside of that, myself included. And so this time was also, you know, made us as a family reflect on, oh, maybe we're not seeing it from the right perspective, or maybe we don't understand. But as we have reflected, and, and it's been a challenge for us, and I'm sure other people, I, I just hope that other people can do that. I think this community has the tools to do that, and everyone in this community has the tools to do that. I hope that, again, we as a community, looking at, you know, the, the, the mental health that keeps on being brought up. I know that that is something that impacts other families, and I, I, I can sympathize with those families who are, whose students are going through some mental health issues. But I hope, again, that they are mindful that when they do have access to seek help, you know, think about the people that may not have the access to seek help in, in getting mental health treatment or mental health attention. And I hope that, you know, the schools being closed is not the, the main factor that has caused them to, you know, go down a darker path with their, in regards to their mental health. I hope that, you know, everyone is doing the best that they can, and that the things that have been mentioned in terms of mental health are not, you know, a symbol of what is plaguing the students, you know, as they move forward. So I think it's really important to, you know, mental health is really important, and it's, and it's important for kids and families to be healthy. And I just don't want people to be confused and say that school is the only symptom that causes kids and families to be unhealthy in terms of their mental health. I've just heard that narrative over and over. I'm not a doctor or anything.
David, I hate to cut you off, but just want to wrap up.
That's all good. Oh, it's all, no, I appreciate the time, and again, I appreciate you all. Thanks for what you do for the community.
Thanks for calling, David. We appreciate you.
Thanks. Bye.
Melissa, can you hear me?
I can.
Could you, oh, sounds like you got it. Thank you. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Sure. My name's Melissa Fitz. My address is 3487 Bay Highlands Drive in Green Bay, Wisconsin. Thank you for taking my call this evening. I, once again, just wanted to touch base on a few items in hopes that, you know, as we look to progress to return to school, that we can do so safely and, and keep in mind some of the items that previous callers had called in. I just want to, first of all, start with, I think it's great that there's, you know, some district representation. We've had some callers, the first caller, and I believe the gentleman I just followed, that have an interest in the district, whether it be a spouse that's employed, or they themselves employed. And I, I thank them for that, and I, I thank them for their, their service too as well. I do want to echo a previous caller in regards to, you know, the very first caller, Mr. Conop, when he called in, had referenced just some concerns, and in particular with social media. And I think all of us that have worked with social media and have visited sites, have gone online, have seen a tremendous amount of disagreement on multiple different sites. And, you know, I just want to reference, clearly, I'm part of the Open Green Bay Schools, and there are 2,200 members, which means that it's not just one or two people that are looking and needing for the schools to open. In, in just reading the stories upon the website, there is a lot of tragedy taking place, a lot of concerns, a lot of special needs families that are struggling currently. So I also emphasize for Mr. Conop's concerns and the other gentleman right previous to me regarding upholding policy. You know, I think that's critical to be able to communicate to the teachers and employees, so there's a clear understanding. With that being said, I, I want to compliment the district on the latest COVID dashboard that's been updated out there, and I think the good news is the numbers are down. We're down to 312 per 100,000 for 14 days. I think the other thing that's really neat with it, you can also identify and look at schools in particular. So across the district, there's eight kids in isolation, 128 students in quarantine, three staff in isolation, 28 staff in quarantine. So 167 total, low, low, low numbers. When we look at, you know, how, how policies are being handled and taken care of, I think one thing we could do is when we look at concerns such as previous callers have had on how do we enforce masking, how do we enforce some of these things? There are multiple districts that do have diversity that we could contact and, and find out how are they supporting those, those groups that are, you know, we are concerned about. And, you know, I, I think there's an opportunity there to partner with, with other districts as well and find out what, what are some of the tools. And the last thing I just want to finish with is, for those that are not out on the Open Green Bay Schools website, I just want to read a post that was put up earlier this morning. And really, it was an outlook to find ways to support our, our teachers and employees within the district. And it, it says, "Calling all Green Bay public school teachers and employees working with face-to-face options in return to school. Can you please provide some ideas and insight?" "It is clear school will not look like the photo below." So it basically has a teacher that's working with two students. "However, we are hoping there are still things volunteers can do to help the return to be less stressful for everybody. Please comment below. All grades, elementary, middle school, high school teachers, have you applied for face-to-face instruction? If so, how was the process? Do you have any ideas for improvement? If you've not applied, why not? If you haven't or are currently instructing face-to-face, what's worked well? And what were some surprises that you've experienced?" Or anything else that you want to add? The second item of request was, "Upon return to school, please list one or two things parents can assist with that would help to ease the transition. What tools, websites have you found that parents may find useful in getting students prepared for a return to school?" And the last thing is, "What do you need from your principals or the district office to be successful in return?" Think tools, communication. What do you need for all students to be successful virtual and face-to-face? So, you know, I, I just want to point that out because of the fact that we do have a lot of teachers right now that are face-to-face, whether it be chemistry classes, welding classes, many, many classes. And it, it should hopefully ease concerns. If we are actively talking to these instructors and finding out what's working well and what's not working, are they, are students adhering to the mask policy? Where are we finding hiccups? That should hopefully help, you know, all of us, as we, whether it be parent, teacher, whoever it is that, you know, is helping with the return to school. We have information out there. We need to gather it, and we need to present it so people can start to become comfortable with, with a safe return. And that's really all I had to say this evening. I do appreciate your time. I, I know it hasn't been easy, but please understand there are many kids struggling with mental health, and absolutely, this needs to be just the beginning of our focus and our partnership. It, it's a long time coming, and all of us need to continue to stay engaged and, and look for ways to find solutions to the concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling, Melissa. We appreciate it.
You bet.
May have to skip this one as well. I did hear from Beth that the one we skipped originally did not want to call, so we're good not going back to her.
Okay.
So moving on to number 10, we'll, we'll come back to number nine at the end.
Thank you. Hi Kristen, can you hear me? Kristen, can you hear me?
Yes, this is Kristen Wall.
Thank you very much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and then giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Sure. My name is Kristen Wall, and I am at 2835 East Pennwood Circle in Green Bay. And I just wanted to give a little bit of a perspective as a mother and as a healthcare worker at a hospital. So I currently work in a hospital directly with very ill COVID patients. So I definitely understand the severity of the virus. I've seen many patients suffer over the last year from it. And I've been in healthcare for 15 years, and I've never felt this type of emotional turmoil working with all of these patients. But I'm also a mother of a child who has been doing virtual learning for almost a year, and I see on a day-to-day basis the effects and the struggles that the kids are having and that the parents are having with this process. I feel that I have been very patient. I've been very understanding, and I'm very reasonable when it comes to knowing what the risks are of the spread of the virus. But at this point, a year into it, if the school board thinks that they're helping lessen the burden on healthcare professionals, they're not. 60% of healthcare workers have children in school. With virtual learning, healthcare workers were not only faced with the daily burden of working with the COVID patients and worrying about transmitting that virus homes, but were having to take on the burden of guiding our kids through this failing virtual learning process. I see my coworkers on the phone while at the hospital guiding their kids through virtual learning in between seeing patients. I personally make phone calls. I FaceTime with my son while I'm at work, trying to guide him through this failing process. My son is very lucky to have a dedicated teacher, and I'm lucky to have a son that is very intelligent, but at this point, he is checking out from this. He's not thriving. I have a hard time believing any of our children are thriving in this environment. We are just getting by. If the school board thinks they're protecting the community, they're not. Research shows the children are less likely to be infected and less likely to be a source of transmission. And if they think they're protecting the students, they certainly are not. We're over 100 days in. We're a year into the virus. And all we have been given are constant changing tentative plans. A year in, we need a firm plan. We need a plan based on the research that is out there. There is plenty of research out there, plenty of reputable sources that give reasonable guidelines to have kids return to school safely. I would love to see our kids get back and have these strategies implemented.
Is that all, Kristen?
Yes, that is all.
Okay, sorry. Just wanted to make sure I didn't cut you off. Thank you very much for calling. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Eric, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to call. If you could, start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
You bet. Thank you. My name is Eric Young. I live at 1077 Western Avenue. I want to say thanks for taking my call. I've got two boys that are in the Green Bay School District. One is at Lombardi, and one is at Da Vinci. And sadly, they both really want to be back at school. As was stated last August, this is a bad situation, and you're making decisions that will never please anyone in our school community. I definitely do not envy any of you. However, I do think you do have the opportunity to come as close as you can to pleasing most of the student body and the parents. Send our kids to school full-time and now. I hear and I understand the voices of the people wishing to stay home. I hear teachers, officials, some of you and others saying there needs to be a voice for these people, for the stay-home crowd. For those who are compromised, concerned, or maybe they don't feel comfortable speaking up. But you know, the remaining percent who do not want to do the in-person learning are already getting their wish. They can and they will be able to stay home. So nothing has to change for them. Nothing will change for them. Nobody is making anybody go to school. So when the rest of us attend our in-person learning, hopefully someday that will actually happen, it won't further compromise those folks, those ones that are choosing to stay home. They'll be unaffected by this. And I got to be honest, I'm, I'm really starting to grow tired of the argument. It's just not a valid concern. We're all stuck in this same fishbowl, and not all of us like the fishbowl that we're in, and we're not being let out right now. I feel that the board is not giving us a way out of this fishbowl, and I feel like you're not listening to our wants. We feel you're not taking action, the action that we want, and you've had 11 months to come up with something. I'm, I'm troubled. The sobs and the pleas, and the desperation in people's voices, you know, that we've been hearing on these calls. I don't understand how that's not enough for you to take some action. How are these concerns not an action point for you? When you cut down a tree, it has rings that show growth. Each ring represents a year, and the trends are apparent, right? Wide rings happen when there's ample water and nutrients. Trow years are narrow. COVID will have and leave a lasting effect of narrow rings. Last year, this current year, and in upcoming years, due to subpar instructional possibilities. And that's not a dig on any of our teachers, of which we're all very appreciative of them, but this is just not an ideal situation, and the kids are not getting the education that they need to be having. This is going to spill over into enrollment test scores, I mean athletics, and the kids' just overall trajectory for their futures. I think everybody's in agreement that kids need to be in school. The decision, you know, the question here just kind of seems to be, when? And I urge you to let this be soon, so that the growth ring of 2021 can be as wide and with as much growth as possible. you to let this be soon so that the growth ring of twenty twenty one can be as wide and with as much growth as possible. You guys have that power. Please listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Eric. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Joe. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you very much for calling in. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address and then you have five minutes to speak.
Yeah, my name is Joe McCabe and I live at thirteen twenty seven Canterbury Road. Board members, school district personnel and parents. I'm frustrated that our community is so fractured. It bothers me that my voice as an educator seems to carry less value than a parent or a billboard. It bothers me that as an educator, we spend time and district money training to be culturally responsive, yet are deemed or are demeaned when we point out the inequities in our current situation. It bothers me that by saying I am a union member, that my voice seems to carry less value. So instead, I would like to, to use my parent voice. I'm a parent that chooses to bring my children into the Green Bay area public school district. My oldest son is in college now. It was his first year this year and as of winter, he is a first semester junior. Why? Simply because of the Green Bay Public School and what it offered him. To me, a parent, this district stands for opportunity. My child decided to take that opportunity. He took AP classes with educators that expanded his understanding and pushed him. He had turbocharged classes that offered him the opportunity to urge college credits in his high school career. He spent three and a half years in classrooms filled with opportunity. He came home in March of last year and physically finished his senior year at home. The word physically is important because my son continued his learning virtually with the same educators that pushed him in class, teaching in a manner none of them were trained to do. It was not easy for him. It was not easy for my wife or I. We grieved all of the things that he would not have, like his senior brawl, his last concerts and an in-person graduation. We realized early on that our child was going to need some help dealing with the stress and anxiety of such a huge change. We found ways of creating a new normal routine, set up workstations for mom, dad and all of the boys. Speaking of all of the boys, when this pandemic turned our lives upside down, our family was also hosting two foreign exchange students that attended school in Green Bay. We had a senior and a junior and they were dealing with more uncertainty than our own children. On top of moving to virtual learning, they were both locked in a country away from their families. Again, we knew that these children were going to need emotional support. Technology served as a lifeline for all of us in three different countries. It was literally months before both were able to travel home safe to their families. Our senior exchange student was able to complete all of the required coursework virtually here to graduate and is currently attending university. And our junior exchange student is back with his family and attending his final year at home. My wife and I chose to be parents and accept that responsibility that came with having children. We were abruptly transitioned last March. We realized that if we were negative about the decisions made, that our children would quickly follow and that toxicity would ruin any chance of them being successfully virtually. There's a real mental illness being highlighted in this pandemic. I've seen it firsthand, the amount of work that our educators, including social, school, social workers, psychologists and counselors take on daily in our schools. This pandemic has brought a severe lack of support into the spotlight. Parents should not have to wait months to get help for their children. However, schools should not have to be the only community support for those families. I have watched this board and the school administration every other week or weekly sometimes grapple with decisions that they should not have to make. No one should have to choose between sending students and staff into a potentially unsafe environment. This district has spent so much money and time creating safe schools. We have extra entry doors with security, cameras and training that is to deal with nightmare potential threats. Now we have a potential threat that cannot be seen on those cameras or stopped by an extra door. I have two things that I would like to ask this board, the administration and the parents listening, listening. First, please realize that this pandemic has created an us versus them mentality that is tearing this community and nation apart. Instead of villainizing public schools, reach out to our government who has allowed public health and lives to become politics. Ask them to stop fighting amongst themselves about who should have the right to do something and instead work together and actually enact legislation that helps our communities. Second,
Joey, I don't want to interrupt you. I'll give you a couple of seconds to finish, but you're at the five minute mark.
Thank you. Second, realize that our education and staff are grappling with the same unthinkable decisions about returning to face-to-face instruction. There is only one positive for most of us planning on returning and that is that there will be an opportunity to get the first dose of vaccination before returning. Please do not take that opportunity away. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Joe. We appreciate it.
I'm gonna circle back, Eric, and, and try to pick up the one that we skipped. Went to voicemail again.
Okay. All right, that wraps up our public forum. Moving on in the agenda, we'll go to consent agenda. I would look, I guess first, are there any items in the consent agenda that anyone would want removed for discussion? All right, seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor? Hi.
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 Opposed? All right, consent agenda passes six to zero. Uh, going down then to number five on the agenda under presentations, we have a legislative update. Just a quick refresher. So back in April, we decided that Brenda would serve as our legislative liaison, providing these updates. When Vice President Shelton was then elected to also, or to the legislature, she took that over. Now that she left, we went back to Brenda. And so Brenda, I'll hand it over to you to give that update.
All right, um, this is just going to be quick. Basically, I, I wrote up a few notes about activity that happened last week. First one was Assembly Bill AB one that originally a similar piece of legislation was passed in January. The Senate and Governor Evers worked on a bill. Um, the assembly then took up the bill and added quite a few amendments to that. It went back to the Senate on Friday. It was passed in the Senate and was vetoed by Governor Evers. Um, I listed some of the things in the bill that would have affected our school district. Um, at this point, there isn't this, uh, the COVID relief bill is in limbo and I'm assuming that the legislature will come back to that at some point. Also, the legislature voted to repeal the governor's mask mandate. Both, both branches voted to repeal. Just wanted to note that I know we, as a district, we wrote a letter to our legislators um, requesting that they keep the mask mandate in place as a way for us to be sure that we can follow that mitigation strategy. Uh, we did have two area Republican Assembly Representatives. There were four of them, four Republicans that voted against repealing. Uh, it was David Stephan and Joel Kitchen. So, um, I know they heard from a lot of people, a lot of different organizations to keep that mask mandate in place. And, you know, we're listening. Um, that's all I have. Those are our questions.
Uh, there any questions for Brenda? All right. Thank you very much, Brenda. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, so moving on to number six under discussion items, before we get started, um, I would like to propose that perhaps we move letter A, the G BAPS forward discussion down below item number, uh, letter D, uh, parent advisory committee, just to kind of flow with the discussion that might come up during that topic. So is anybody interested in making a motion to adjust the agenda?
I move that we replace discussion item A right after discussion item D, that will then flow into the action item A.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, all in favor? Hi.
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 Opposed? All right. Uh, so that'll adjust our agenda slightly. So that takes us to letter B under discussion. Student representative participation at board meetings. Steve, you just want me to handle this one?
Sure, it should be, uh, sharp from the administrative side. I know that Andrew had requested that we take a look at the policy um, and look at some revisions to allow greater flexibility. Uh, you've got a proposed revised policy there um, that hopefully provides the, uh, the flexibility that Andrew is seeking, uh, in his request.
Right, um, yeah, I mean essentially what the language just clarifies is regards to special board meetings and student representative, uh, representation at those meetings. Um, Andrew, is there anything you wanted to say beyond that? You're on mute.
I, I appreciate this being able to be put into an agenda quickly. There, I mean, there is, or at least at the time, still is an important reason for that, which is, I think the most important meetings that student reps could be at would be the meetings where we're talking about whether or not uh, to return to in person. So we can hear that, that perspective and there's, there is the potential for, for more meetings that might have to be off of the regular meeting cycles in order to, um, to do that. I think in the, in the past, it's been handled informally. Rarely did a student rep ask to be at one of these meetings, but I think it, there was one where um, in relation to a school being repurposed that a student asked to be there and it was just done informally. Um, this ensures that it's, that the, the policy allows for the students to ask. It goes to the, it goes to the board president. I, I would assume that whomever is the board president would be unlikely to deny a student not asking to go to a very strange type of meeting. Uh, closed session was always exempt anyways. Uh, regular and scheduled were always permitted. And I guess I would, I would defer to the student reps for anything more on this. This simply, this simply provides a mechanism to ask which did not exist before.
Uh, go ahead, Noah.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate, um, thanks for getting on the agenda and, uh, having the, the policy language there. Uh, from my side, it looks great. It lets, um, keeps jurisdiction still where it's supposed to be with the board as to whether or not they've approved that request with the president. But, um, just let's us formally, uh, make the request if there is something like, uh, a COVID vote on that gets put on a special meeting because I know you don't like to put the votes out of work session. I think it's an important piece and I'm, it's a simple one. So, uh, thanks for, thanks for moving this item forward.
All right, Laura. Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, how ma- how many, how many times did the student rep, which usually was you, request or attempt to request in the last year? Was it three? Okay, so this is not, this is not a thing where we're gonna get, I mean, I'm, you know, when we have our, occasionally have to have a five-minute meeting to approve some routine hires, I, you know, I don't, although I wouldn't see any harm in a student rep being there, it's, it seems like people, students wouldn't want to make the trip even when the trip is, is Zoom. But every once in a while you get that thing of urgent student concern. We also had some, some dress code related specials um, as well. So, um, I just wanted to verify what that number was because I thought I knew, but no one would know better than me.
Go ahead, Laura.
Um, I have a question for Melissa. Hey, Melissa, um, can, do you, can you give, um, any kind of historical background as to why that, um, special board meetings might have exempted student reps? Is there any background or history there that would be helpful in understanding? Um, in understanding why that it was, it is that way?
I, I don't know, Laura. I don't have the history. I just know what was put in place and historically what special board meetings were, were the, the subject of the special board meetings. I think Brenda and Andrew could probably speak better than I could on the history of those special board meetings and, and what they were typically used for. Um, they, they weren't called as frequently as they're called now and it was usually more of a workshop or, um, the hiring of, of staff as it got closer to the start of the school year. But not, um, as, as they're used right now is my understanding. I don't know if Brenda and Andrew could weigh in on that.
I don't recall changing it, put it that way, but so I think it's been like this for a long time.
We also have a situation where, oh, go ahead, sorry Brenda.
And it's probably related to what Melissa said. If it's been there since before, um, I've been on the board of probably how special board meetings were held and why they were held were much different than they are now. Eighteen, twenty years later.
I think there will be, I'm, I'm hoping there will be, like I said, the, the need for, the need for special board meetings that would even be a type that a student rep would request. I mean, this, this came up now because of, of COVID. So hopefully this type of, you know, a reason of voting extended school closure, knock on wood, will not be something anymore. I, I do think there are, I could see potential for certain things like the, um, you know, at some, some point will be, we have some things in the hopper about, um, you know, where certain, uh, programs and schools might relocate to, that would be very relevant to have a, have a student rep at, so. Thank you.
All right. No other discussion there? All right, we will transition on, um, to letter C, class size. Uh, Andrew, I'm gonna hand this to you right away since this was, uh, your request.
It weren't, we were, were we supposed to, uh, thought we were gonna be voting on the class size because, or not the, well, I thought we were gonna be voting on the class size too, but more importantly, um, that is a, that is a policy change in the next, the next month is conceivably the time where it could be most likely that it would happen.
Oh, I see. Yeah, um. Melissa, are we able to move that into the action item or because we're not posted for it, do we have to wait?
We're not posted for it and the board policy, onboard policies does not permit this sort of, uh, one meeting consideration. does not permit this sort of one-meeting consideration. The policy indicates that changes or, or board policies will be brought in a work session and then voted on in a regular session. And that's explicit in the, the board policy.
Okay. So a little bit out of order that we brought this to a work session, but we won't be able to vote on it then.
But this isn't a, yeah, so so what do we change in, in the board policy on, on board? I mean, could we?
Well, you're not posted tonight for action and the, the board policy requires two meetings for consideration of changes to policy. You requested, Andrew, that it be brought tonight. And I, I did point out to, to Steve and Eric and Brenda that this would require us to bring it back to another board meeting in order to, to vote on it, because it cannot be done in one, in one meeting.
So we've done, we've done waiver, we've done waiver of second, we've done waiver of second reading a lot with policy to the point where I think we were not even attentive to it. Although that was, if we've not been attentive to it, that is incorrect. I will, I will give you that.
That was under the previous, so if you remember, prior to the current board policy, we brought a board policy to a work session, a board meeting, and then the following month to another work session and another board meeting. So there were four meetings that policies were brought to. And that's what we were waiving, where it was that second month, because we usually needed the, the policy to be implemented earlier. So right now, the, the board policy talks about any emergency situations. You can seek to waive that two-step process, but we're not posted for it tonight to bring it in action.
So, yeah, so Andrew, what I would maybe suggest is that if we do have to schedule a special board meeting between now and the March board meeting, we could put this on that agenda and vote for it in that meeting and change the, the policy there.
Okay, so we could do that. It just can't be at the same meeting?
Yeah, I think based upon board policy that says that, you know, we should go to two unless it's an emergency situation. I don't think this is an emergency, but if we do have to schedule a special meeting that we would have to vote on, we could vote on this policy there and a student could be present.
Okay, so if, if there is, if there is a meeting after, you're saying that if there is a meeting after tonight but before March eighth?
Well, it would be, it would be before March twenties, whatever, whatever the, the regular board meeting is in March.
Regular, but we changed regular. This is the regular in February now.
Right, this is, this is the first meeting that we've talked about this policy, right? So.
So March eighth would be the next regular, so we would vote on it on March eighth, right? Because we don't.
Oh, yes, yep, yep, yep. I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct.
So you're, okay, so you're saying that if it has to happen before, if we have to have, and I hope we won't have too many of these after whatever might happen tonight. If there was a special meeting about, I would presume it would be return date, would be something that would be relevant to the student reps. And another change in, we could have the meeting, if there's a student request, we could have the meeting begin with the vote on this policy.
Correct.
At which point, the student could request. If the student wasn't planning to request, we wouldn't do it. We would change the policy, the student could be seated, and then we'd continue.
Correct.
And hopefully, we won't even have any surprise special meetings before March eighth, so it wouldn't matter anyways.
Correct.
Okay, I'm okay. If there's an understanding that that could be done, then I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Eric, if I could just add, I, I know I did share this with the administrative team and there's quite a bit of concern about some repercussions or ramifications of making the change. And I know that we have both folks at the building level and at the district level that would like to share those, those thoughts with the board. So if, in the process that you put together, if there would be an opportunity for that team to present to you, I think that would be of significant benefit to the board before a vote was taken.
With regard to ICSC or?
With the class size issue.
Class size, yep, yep. Okay, thank you. Just making sure. So not, not tonight, but before we would vote on class size at the next meeting, is that correct? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, no problem. All right, so then some.
Eric?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question. Steve? Would you anticipate them presenting to the board? Or how would they communicate their concerns with the board, with the full board?
I, I think the best way to do that would be through a, a work session that allowed us to invite some of those end-users to the table to talk to you about the scheduling process and, and some of the implications that may not be advantageous for students.
Okay, thank you.
So Andrew, I'll, I'll hand it to you. There, there's no administrative presentation tonight as was cited when you made this request, but we put it on here for discussion.
So again, so again, we have something that I was, and yep, I should have, I should have been on the ball sooner, I guess, but obviously COVID and return to school was the, as it should be, the predominant item. However, now it takes us to a situation where if, if this passes on March eighth, it's going to be moot, mostly be moot for this year, because decisions would have already happened. It would be difficult for the board to vote. I'm not saying impossible, but it would be difficult to vote against this, so, to vote against the class size. So, you know, this proposes that the board would vote to accept, the board would have to approve class sizes over thirty in high school, over twenty-eight in middle, over twenty-five in elementary.
Twenty-six.
Over twenty-six. Thank you. I just think there's, we've, we've been hearing about it, we've been hearing about it for years. I was hoping to get it before, you know, if there wasn't, if there wasn't COVID, I would have proposed this last year and it would have been right after last year's course scheduling, but at least it would have been in place for this year. We heard loud and clear that large class sizes were, were an issue for, we heard from parents, we heard from students. We did a, we did a few things, but nothing is, it's, we have only a guideline. And I'm not, I'm not okay with, I can't go back to the public and say we had a, a good verbal discussion at the board table and we have a guideline, because the stu, it doesn't make it any better for the student. Okay, it, it marginally makes it better for the student in the grand picture if their teacher has the right overall average caseload, yes. But it doesn't make a difference to that student day-to-day in the, in the classroom that might be too crowded. And some of these, I, I would imagine that, you know, me being the one bringing it up, would I, would there be some things on the class size exception list that I would vote for? Sure, because there are absolutely some that make sense. A single section of thirty-one at a small school may make sense. But if there's, you know, if there's a hundred eighty-six kids, we shouldn't be making six sections of thirty-one. That should go to a seventh section. Maybe it does now, but the reason I think there needs to be something here is because whenever, there, there is no, there is no hard cap. And this is an alternative to a hard cap. And I hope that, I hope that the administration that might not like a board vote on class size exceptions would see this as a compromise effort to not be proposing a hard, a hard cap, which I would like to do. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to meet, I'm trying to meet halfway here. The board could be presented a list of classes. They could look it over. If they think they make sense, fine. If they don't like them, fine. But otherwise, we only have a guideline and, and guidelines don't really count.
So Andrew, I'm gonna speak first to this and I, I've talked to you a little bit about this already. I'm in favor of having a, a conversation about class size. I think our administration does a great job of trying to reduce class size and sometimes that creates situations that they've presented to us before. It's not that, that it's been hidden, but I'm interested in, in this conversation. I personally think that it's a more robust conversation. I would love to see, and I've talked to Steve about this, some things that he's done in his previous district around policy that, that does more than this. I think that the, the policy that you're proposing creates some unintended consequences. So if there's a situation where there's a section of twenty-eight kids in a chemistry class and a student mid-year moves in and wants to take chemistry, technically, this policy would prohibit them from putting them in that class until the board could meet and approve whether or not that kid could be in chemistry, just as one kind of example. So I'm, I, I wouldn't be in favor of this motion as it sits here today until I could get more information and, and wanna to make robust changes to the overall class size policy. So not that I, I am against it inherently, but wouldn't feel comfortable. And then the other thing that I would ask is, our district inevitably in the next month is, is going to be going through significant changes with the regard to starting up. And don't know that, I would want to have our administrative team be focused on potential class size policy when there's gonna be plenty of work to do around getting our district back up and in a face-to-face realm. The other thing that I would add is that virtual instruction is gonna change our district forever. I would anticipate that there will be virtual classes available to students probably forever for the students who want to stay in an environment like this. What does that do to our class size? Do we need a class size policy for virtual classes and for in-person classes? I just think there's too many unanswered questions to be able to look at this in a silo, pass one standalone policy. So again, what I'm telling you is that I don't inherently disagree with what you're presenting, but I don't, I, I can't support it without more robust information. So that's just speaking for myself.
As I go to one of your points directly, so I never, I never intended this to be for mid-year and I've always spoken about my views on class size as being basically related to the scheduling process. And I, I think there might be a place for, you know, I think there might be a place in the first, in the first weeks of, of a year. Yes, I do think students should have access to the standard curriculum and classes should be split. And if they can't be split, then that would be a situation where I would hope the board would vote for the, the class, because there's no alternative. But I never intended this to be for the mid-year student moving into the district or anything like that. I just wanted to keep it, I wanted to keep it simple for the motion. I would have certainly offered that myself as an amendment to my own motion if it was able to be made tonight. You know, I, I didn't intend this to be something that at any point during the year, we need a board meeting to add someone to a class.
Okay. I mean, that was just one hypothetical I was thinking of, so thank you for clarifying that.
It's an important hypothetical, because we do have adds throughout the year and I don't, I don't, no one wants to have a, a board meeting every time a extra kid adds, adds to a class. Part of, part of keeping it at twenty-eight and thirty instead of allowing it to intentionally, or discouraging it from intentionally running at thirty-two, is that, okay, it's a lot easier to say the new kid who moved into the district, we can fit a thirty-second kid into the classroom for the second half of the semester. A lot easier than we can fit the thirty-third, thirty-fourth, thirty-fifth, so. Okay.
Thanks. So Andrew's actually speaking to the what, right? And then it sounds like we're going to figure out possibly the how, if that's possible. But when I saw this on the agenda, and it's been something that's been out there for the entire time I've been on the board, I've brought it forward a few times to the table. And the reason being is that many staff, many teachers have brought this to our attention. And I just found a few notes on why. I think it's important to discuss why we would consider this. Why would we even have a conversation about it? Why are teachers actually bringing this up? And I think they have a lot of points when they, when they do that. There's obviously research around class sizes and some of the research talks to, or speaks to, you have less individualized attention, especially for the students who are struggling to keep up with the requirements. You have lower quality instruction potentially, because teachers struggle to facilitate that with students on a very authentic level. You have an increase in classroom management issues and we know that is a huge problem. And that is probably one of the biggest reasons that I've received information about class sizes personally. The prevalence of children with disadvantaging life situations, financial constraints, social emotional issues, personal behavioral challenges. They end up getting lost in the system and then potentially even become a, a casualty of disproportionate discipline numbers. So I'm hopeful that we, as a board, can take a hard look at this and consider all of the why when this comes back. So, thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda. Any other feedback on Andrew's motion and, and proposed next steps regarding class size? Go ahead, Noah.
President, so just by virtue of who proposed it, I have kinda, kinda seen some of this and, um, I, I, yeah, I think, I think it's certainly a good discussion. I, I'm glad that, that the topic is here and when it comes back for action, yeah, I, I think it'd be smart to add in, to add in exceptions, so you don't end up to, like, you know what I mean? Like, as already discussed, you know, having to have a board meeting or, or dividing a class because of a major transfer. But in general, I think, you know, having a, having a solid requirement for the caps on class sizes with exceptions being as minimized as possible is generally a good effort. And even if the board doesn't go through with exactly this, I hope that you guys come up with something similar moving forward to get, to get class sizes as, as reasonable as they can be, because I think it's, it's obvious, you know, students are gonna learn better when, when they're in, when they're in smaller classes. And as much as it's feasible, I think, I think it's a good idea and I'm glad that there's a discussion on it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, hearing none. We will move on to letter D, the Parent Advisory Committee. And Steve, I think I'll hand this over to you.
I, so I know that Rhonda had asked to bring this forward. I had a good conversation with her right after the last meeting and I, I shared with her a model that may allow us to get a voice from every school in the district and also perhaps provide a platform to help schools grow their parent support network in each school. I've had a chance to talk to Lori about it. We are interested in, in moving forward with it. And maybe I should back up, sorry about that, for reference. And Rhonda, you can jump in anytime. I'll just try to capture some of our conversation. Rhonda and I talked about the fact that there's always been a platform for parent engagement with the superintendent's office and that because of COVID this year, that fell away. And we talked about how to re-engage that. We also talked about how to ensure that there was a seat at the table for every building in the district and how best to go about garnering people from each of those buildings to fill those seats, the role that our PTOs might be able to play in that at the buildings that have them. And then that led to a discussion about getting that process up and rolling, perhaps starting it virtually if necessary and then moving it in person. So that's just a real quick encapsulation of the conversation that we had. I do think it presents a great opportunity for us as we kind of come out of the pandemic and back into the real world.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thanks. I appreciate this being brought out on the the agenda. It is important that we, I believe, bring everyone with us as much as possible. Especially looking into next year. When we know we are going to be. Having to look at how this. Whole last school year has affected our students and families and staff. And how we look at what to do next, what our vision is going to be. And I think it would be a very good idea to have that that group brought back into the the mix. To bring forward some ideas. I know they're out there wanting to be part of that yesterday. But it's, I think, just to bring them back to consider what we could do with that and have another voice at the table with us would be great. And I look forward to that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, I won't. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I I guess I'm interested in just a little bit more. A little bit more on why this was allowed to drop off at what might have been the most important time. That one of the most important, not the most important, one of the most important things to do might have been to get that. Long established committee active obviously would have had to be virtual. Was there not even were there not even requests from people who were in the the parent advisory committee? Had it had it start? Yeah, I guess. Just it's not a I spent a lot of time on it, but I I guess, yeah, I'm interested in why, how. Just just as I'm interested. In how the quarterly is with the student reps at maybe the most important time to hear from them were able to fall off. We're not talking about that, though. I'm just talking about parent advisory right now. Could you speak to that, please?
Can I, Andrew, can I speak to what I've experienced from hearing from? Okay, so. Who I've heard from, the the parents that I've heard from. I don't believe that they were even meeting, obviously, last spring virtually. And that's obviously there was a lot going on in the district, but. They did not share with me that they've reached out and have been denied. So I want to make sure that's clear. Just what I.
Okay, it's good to know that they, you know, that means that it's not just this administration either. And I guess to some, it's not, you know, student. The student representation piece, there are some policy and rules that guide that, but if I'm not mistaken. Maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea, but we don't have a policy establishing the the parent advisory committee, right? It's it's suggested and allowable by by policy, so. I guess that's that's a fair point and and Steve, if it had, you know, if it had not been meeting before you. There wasn't a policy or rule to guide it and there weren't. Really request for it, I guess that would answer that would. Answer my question to the best that you could based on your time here, so.
Right.
Start it now, so we'll start it soon. So that's good.
All right, any other comments on the parent advisory council?
Can I just ask for it? What is the timeline?
We're starting that right now. I part of what we'll do is I get that understanding of where we have access to parent reps. And figure out where we don't so we can start getting that group. Fully seated and then I try to get the meetings scheduled between now and the end of the school year. I'd really like to get it going this school year so that there's some momentum to carry us over the summer. That's always a tough time to try to get people to meet. Lots of those groups go on hiatus. I think that's what happened as Andrew indicated last year. Group stopped meeting, went on hiatus and just didn't start up again. So I'd really like to try to get something started here before the end of the year. So that we've got a little momentum to carry into the summer. So we're ready to jumpstart that next fall.
We would appreciate that very much, the people that have asked. Thank you.
Right, any final thoughts on that topic? Very good. That takes us now to the reordered agenda, letter A, G BAPS forward. There's four things that are kind of in the. In the notes, the first, I believe, is for Steve and Deputy Superintendent Byer to talk about the in person instructional model draft.
Yes, so I I'm gonna turn it over to Vicki here in just a moment. As you can see on the agenda, there's a short summary in there. What we've tried to do during this entire time is be responsive to. Concerns that are brought forward, both to us directly as an administrative team. And also to the board and then through the board to the administrative team. Through community comments and and participation in meetings. Obviously, that's resulted in several different models being considered. And most recently, understandably, there was a great deal of concern that came to us from parents. Who were worried about children having to switch. Teachers for the remainder of the school year. We also heard from teachers that were worried about. Having to step away from their kids and perhaps incorporating new students into their classroom. And the challenges that that would bring, the lack of stability that that would provide for students and families and staff. So the team, after that last board meeting, we met, they went back, they said, we can. We can tackle that and I appreciate their attitude and their effort on that. And after about a week of work on that, they came back with the draft proposal late last week. We looked at that, decided that that would be able to meet that expectation for parents. Vicki's gonna share a little bit about that.
Thanks, Steve. My plan was just to read the statement that I had shared with the board on board docs for those that don't have access to it so that they can hear it. And then ask the board members to please present any questions that you have to Eric and Brenda. As we work through this process. The teams are going to be principals are going to be meeting with their teachers throughout this entire week. In fact, they began today. To talk about what the skeleton looks like for the plan for both virtual and onsite. And we're hoping by the next board meeting, we'll be able to present. More specifics about what that looks like. But we wanted to ensure that teachers were able to participate collaboratively in this. So the statement reads as follows, District Office has been working closely with school leadership. To develop a plan that will have our students remaining with their current teachers. Regardless of whether they stay virtual or transition back to onsite. Students remaining virtual will log on for four days and receive instruction either synchronously or and or asynchronously. For the public, that's the language means they would either receive direct instruction for the teacher or log off and work independently. Secondary students who have selected to be onsite will receive instruction in person two days a week and virtually the other two days. Elementary students who have selected to be onsite will receive instruction in person four days a week. This instructional model mimics what other districts have found to be successful and should be the least disruptive for our students and faculty. And I just wanted to point out on that last statement. When I wrote the word. The instructional model mimics what other districts have found to be successful in my mind, I was thinking socially emotional. And as I've, I've had twenty five years of classroom experience, I have a lot of colleagues, friends throughout northeast Wisconsin that I've been able to. Communicate with since last March. And some of them have been onsite regularly, some have been on and off site. And so I've been able to pick their brains and learn about what's working and what isn't. They've found that keeping the students with their classroom teacher. Is successful socially emotionally. The students have already gained a relationship with that teacher. The teachers gained a pretty close relationship with those students as well. So again, I would ask if you have specific questions, if you could please provide them to Eric and Brenda. And then we'll collect those and hopefully get you answers as soon as possible.
Brenda, you have a question?
Becky, I know you don't have all the details, but. We've had a lot of emails and concerns from teachers. About, you know, they they've they've heard a little bit about this and made a lot of assumptions. Can you? And I know in the in last fall, we talked about the high flex model. And that being a very strenuous model for teachers to do. From what I'm hearing you say right now, this is different from that high flex model. Can you can you give us a a general sense of what this will feel like from the teacher's perspective? When they're in the classroom? And then and then go ahead with that. I have one other question that's not related to that.
Yeah, Dr. Warren, I don't want to. I don't want to provide details and then we make changes throughout the week, so I'll I'll try to keep it more high level. I appreciate that question. Yeah, and I, okay, I've I've seen the same concerns too from the teachers and it's part of the reason why. It's not good practice. It's not. Respectful to put out a plan that's half baked. And unfortunately, that's what happened last week. And for an already stressful situation for our educators. To receive only minimal information increases anxiety immensely. And that wasn't our intent, which is why we wanted to wait until this week. To have our principals work directly with their teachers on what this plan could look like. So I regret that that word got out that this is the direction we were moving in and. You know, if you don't have all in from in all of the information, you fill in the blanks yourself. So we're asking our principals this week to work with their teachers to. Look at how this could be an effective model. I'm not gonna lie that it's it's gonna be very difficult, Brenda. And teachers, it is going to be difficult to both meet the needs of the students offsite and virtually. But we are hoping that this week our teachers, as creative as they are in our building principles. Will come up with some really good ways to be able to meet the needs of both students. For example, we have collaborative learning teams, groups of teachers that teach like courses that meet regularly. This has been an ongoing practice in the district that goes way, way before I was here. And one thing to consider would be that perhaps if I am a third grade teacher. And I have a math lesson, maybe I will record that lesson and provide it to my peers to share with their. Virtual students. So that type of collaborations. Teachers would be logging on. For the students that are at home to learn new lessons, new material, very similar to the way we're doing it today. And they will have students in their classroom. We're we're gonna work with our principals to determine what needs might be put in place to help those teachers. I think I might be digging in too deep now and I don't want to scare anybody away from this. So those are kind of the things we're thinking about, Dr. Warren. But but again, the the details need to be worked out.
So it's so it it sounds like it it. Potentially is going the the solutions are going to be unique to each school depending on. The makeup of the classrooms, the virtual makeup, the the teachers collaborate, the ability to collaborate and all those kinds of things.
Yeah, that's correct. We're setting up some guardrails for the schools to follow, but then. They need to be creative for their own unique needs at their school.
Okay. And then one last question, you mentioned talking to other. People in other districts and and socially emotionally, it's been good for kids, which doesn't surprise me. Because this has been one of my big concerns all along is is, you know, going into the London model and having so many kids have to start over with a brand new teacher. And I've also heard from teachers that they really, you know, want to be able to keep that their class together. They've spent a lot of time building that community. One of the concerns that I've heard of and have myself is. Do you know how it affects the kids who are full time virtual? When they're seeing their classmates, you know, in school and their home? Is that something that those schools have figured out a way to to work through? Has that been a problem in terms of exacerbating the, you know, some of the stresses that we we hear from students that are veteran in all virtual environment?
Yeah, that's a really good question. It it's a mixed batch because some students' virtual learning, they've just discovered is really effective for them. So they're not experiencing the socially emotional needs that some of our other students are. I think we need to be honest about this as well. The the kids that are choosing to remain virtual, their experience is going to be different than what it looks like today. And I I think parents really need to understand that. They're they're going to have more asynchronous opportunities than they do today. Because the classroom teacher will be providing direct instruction and working independently and in small groups with the students on campus. You know, to David Wilson's point earlier when he called in. If you looked at the the number or the the students that will be staying virtual, we're looking at our low socio economic. Non white students primarily. So GBEA and our administrative teams have a very and the teachers have very serious concerns about. How we're going to make sure that those students' needs are met. So we're working on creative ways to do that, Dr. Warren, but I wanted to make sure I put that out there that. It's been really important to this Board of Education and to our administrative team and to our schools. That we address these inequities. And I really regret that the pandemic has. Maybe widened, increased some of these that we need to pay attention to.
Thanks, Vicki.
Go ahead, Andrew. You're on mute.
Just just to maybe, and again, realizing that details may be a little bit different from building to building, but. Just correct me if I'm wrong with some things that are just generally a positive about this. Model, it seems like one thing. Teachers will not have to do is. Potentially learn, learn, meet and learn and start to teach a whole. Potentially an entire new group of students immediately. Another another thing would be that. Students would not have the identity confusion of. Jeez, do I do I even go to? Jackson anymore? Do I even go to Barrett anymore? Yeah, I go to Barrett because I see I see it, right? And. And of course, sure, on paper, sure, on paper, they're going to bear and as they get older, they're gonna. Likely maybe take classes from other other schools now. I think the the door is is open to virtual, which will have. Post pandemic some positives. But it's. It seems to me that, you know, there are there are certainly. There are certainly positives here and I would think. Although nothing is although nothing is perfect, I appreciate that there's. Attention to the fact that at least in in many cases, it might not. It might be better to not have a complete switch of switch of classes. I was I was worried about that. I would also hope without needing to get into the weeds tonight, and I might have some specifics. I could potentially see a situation where if a building has, you know. Two of every grade and almost half the kids virtual, that there's some opportunity for pairings, especially if. There's been collaboration at that building already. I think perhaps being at being with your school. Is the thing that I would probably feel most important about with my kids. You know, the other, the other third grade teacher at the same. School, especially if they've been working together, which hopefully they've had some opportunities for that during the pandemic. And I hope that I hope those can be recognized and. My understanding, because I had an early conversation about with Josh about this. Not to put you on the spot, but I just did. Whatever technology needs have to be there to make this work out. Work out, we're able to make that investment and that'll be one of, perhaps be one of the first large. Reimbursements for Corona funds, correct? I mean, it could be.
Yeah, we've, we've already purchased webcams with microphones for every single one of our classrooms. And I think they've all been delivered to the schools at this point. So in every classroom, there will be an opportunity for students at home to be able to view what's going on in the classroom, whether that's. The kid sitting there or the board or however the, the teacher wants to turn the, the camera.
You can turn, you can turn them. The fixed, the fixed webcam that people are used to, although. Although their computer still, still has one if that makes, when, for times when that might make more sense.
Right, and, and it is tethered, you know, because there, there's a wire involved, of course, but yeah. There's a lot of flexibility in terms of which way that thing's pointing and, and the microphones are omnidirectional, so that should provide. For. I, I guess the students at home to, to be able to participate better with their peers in the classroom. Because. You're not just hearing the teacher right in front of their computer, speaking directly into the microphone like you're all doing right now, right? You're pointing that microphone at the classroom. It's designed to pick up. Sounds from every direction, so they should be able to hear some of that ambient chatter and conversation.
And for those, just for the benefit of people watching who might not have as much familiarity with the tech. I guess the idea of, well, geez, could they spend more money and get. You know, a camera that can just go on the teacher's shoulder or something that's just, you can confirm that's just not. If that's going to ever get here, we're not there today.
That's right. Yes, I mean, we're talking about large quantities of, of tech here. We've, we've purchased seventeen hundred webcams at this point. That's. That gets to be difficult, the, the more complex the tech is.
If what I, if what I talked about even, even exists, it's not, I would, I can't imagine it's ready for primetime or I would have. Heard about it and this is, directionality is important. And, and I'm impressed that we. Found a way with your department on purchasing to score seventeen hundred of them because that's not a, that's not an easy. Task in my employment, I know some people with. Some people have a hard time getting two. So, all right, thank you, I appreciate, I just wanted to make sure that we got out there that. I think comfort with knowing that additional tech pieces are going into this as opposed to. Hey, you got, you already have a webcam built into your, into your laptop, so you're good, so thank you.
Yeah, and so you put me on the spot, so I, I'm going to take a little bit more time. The other, the other thing to consider too is the complexity involved. With the staff using the equipment, right? So you could, you could get a really fancy solution, but if, if this, if we don't have time to train the staff. Or the staff, or all sixteen hundred teachers don't take. To that technology, well, that's setting them up for, for not a great situation either. So we felt it was very important to get something that just plugs and plays technology that they're familiar with.
You can, the rotation is the, the game changer here, I think, and though. I think we'll hear that at the end of the year that, you know, if it was. When I talked to teachers, which is kind of a lot, one, one real worry was about a single fixed webcam. And that, that's a big, that's a big deal and we've gotten them a. Second directional, an additional directional webcam, which is, that's a big deal.
Yep, and big, big shout out to Tammy Van Dyke for testing that for us and providing that feedback. Because we had purchased a small box of fixed webcams and she's like, these don't rotate, so. That was important feedback to have. Thank you, Tammy.
All right, if there's nothing else here, then I'll, I'll bring it back to Steve to give us an update on vaccines.
So two updates, one for me, one from Melissa. I'll just give you a quick update on Bellin and Previa. They are both cautiously optimistic that the state is going to be able to get, begin providing them more vaccines. In upcoming weeks, there was a little bit of hiccup in delivery from the federal government over the course of the past couple of weeks. They did a, an admirable job of working within their network. To try to make sure that there were more vaccines available here in the Green Bay area. That's helped them move forward with the 1A folks. And as you know, we're number one in 1B. And they are already working with us to preload information into their system, which will make it easier for our staff to be able to sign up. Through their online portal to, to get their vaccine scheduled. So again, my appreciation to, to the teams at Bellin and Previa, they've been. Very open with us, very willing to dialogue with us, very active in helping us make sure that our teachers are. And our staff are ready to go when 1B becomes eligible. But not wanting to put all of our eggs in one basket. Melissa worked really hard and creatively. To come up with a second option and without stealing her thunder, I'm going to let her talk about that.
Thanks, Steve. And just to follow up on what Steve said about Bellin and Previa's opportunities. We had six hundred and twenty-seven staff who opted into our sharing of their. Contact information with Bellin to ease that, that signing up through Bellin. So that got sent over tonight. Big thanks to Jennifer Vincent for cleaning up the file and making sure that everyone's information was accurate before she sent that over. And we, we did that pretty fast, so we have that sent over and then Jennifer has been working very, very hard on securing. Vaccine opportunities through VaxPro, which is the company that administered our flu vaccine. All of it though is dependent on whether VaxPro can get the vaccine from the state. So they will put in for a request for the vaccine on February twenty-third. And we will find out if they secure the vaccine on February twenty-sixth. And we are scheduled, if they do get it, we're scheduled to have two vaccine clinics on March third and March fourth. We need a very large space in order to do this and we are set to do it at Edison Middle School. But if, based on what the board does tonight, we may have to scramble and find a new place to, to administer that vaccine. Based on the space requirements and the monitoring of staff. We were scheduled to administer five hundred vaccines on the third and five hundred vaccines on the fourth. And we needed a location where we can have our staff come in and be socially distanced. As well as then observing them after they've received the vaccine. So I think you've seen the setups. That Previa and Bellin have done, very large spaces at UWGB and at their Comanche Clinic. So we're going to have to figure that out. VaxPro has the floor plans of Edison and they're working on getting that set up right now. But based on what the board does tonight, we may have to change that. And then we will move forward with getting staff signed up and we'll have waiting lists for staff. If a staff have to cancel so that we're able to use all those five hundred vaccines each day.
Question.
Go ahead, Ron.
Melissa, how many did you say on the third? You said there were five hundred on the fourth, how many on the third?
Five hundred on the third and five hundred on the fourth. VaxPro thinks they can do five hundred per day and then we'll, we will, VaxPro is willing to come back. Because students aren't. In, well, based on the current plan, what we're planning, because students wouldn't be in session on that Wednesday. We would be planning for vaccine clinics every Wednesday until we have all of our staff vaccinated. So the, the tricky one will be the fourth, where we're going to be able to host that vaccination clinic. If kids come back, if kids are back in session that week.
Dawn and then Andrew.
Do we know how many of our staff are already vaccinated as part of 1A?
We had worked with Previa. Previa was phenomenal in getting our, our staff in. First they got our nurses in and then they got about seven hundred and fifty of our staff in under the 1A group.
So seven hundred and fifty under 1A, there was six hundred and twenty-seven that you sent over. That's all student facing?
The six hundred and twenty-seven all fall in the group 1B and it's, it's all, all of our staff will fall in group, group 1B. And so I, I didn't look at that list, Dawn. I don't know if those are. Student facing or, or non-student facing staff, but they all will fall in the group 1B. And the, the VaxPro clinics, we're not able to tier. Who will be eligible for the vaccine? It's, it's going to be first come, first served. Because we, we have to be able to fill those spots. And, and if we're not able to fill the spots, if we do have open spots, we're going to open it up to our. Transportation carriers because they also need to be vaccinated as well. So they will be the group that we look to should we not be able to fill all one thousand spots. Again, depending on VaxPro getting the vaccine from the state.
And Dawn, maybe just one point of clarification for the Bellin one. If you are already a patient with either Bellin or Previa. They already have your information, so then you can simply download the app and get yourself signed up for it. The, the folks that we sent over to Bellin are those that don't currently have a patient relationship with them. Which makes it then almost impossible for you to activate their app. So this is six hundred and twenty-seven people who. May be working through Previa and also trying to work through Bellin to make sure that they can get their names on the list. So if you are already a patient of either one of those two, and actually a nonpatient at Previa, it's pretty straightforward to get. Your, the app set up and get your information entered in there. So this is just a, a way for us to speed that process with Bellin.
We're advising staff, sign up for all eligible locations and wherever you can get in first, get in first. Just make sure you cancel if you've gotten in somewhere on your analyst somewhere else.
Andrew and then Ronda.
Okay, so. How come? Can someone tell me how come? Now, I'm not glad that they didn't get them and I think they're the particularly high-risk category, but. If group 1A is healthcare, healthcare workers and residents of long-term care homes. I'm not talking about specific organizations that found a way to jump queue, but how come? Did we redefine it in Wisconsin? Because I know people who. Don't have a special condition other than being over sixty-five got the vaccine. I think we probably all know someone who did. Unless the people I know are just extraordinarily lucky, right place, right time, but I'm talking about people who. Had scheduled appointments and were over sixty-five and just got the vaccine.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking, Andrew.
Okay, who is group 1A? Healthcare and. Okay, so Wisconsin group 1A is not defined the same as federal 1A, right?
I can tell you that, that 1A includes our school nurses, includes OTPT, includes. Some of our special education teachers, some of their special education.
Into healthcare caregivers, so I totally get that one.
People, people over sixty-five are in 1A. So that's why, you know, you know, people over sixty-five who have got the shot because they're eligible.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking like at the CDC website, so apparently states have the ability to. Make their own definitions. Of 1A, so it's not only prioritizing within the groups, they can actually add someone to the group. Okay.
Right, so when they took the, when the, the board in Madison took the vote, they, they included teachers on 1B. And also put them at the front of the queue.
Okay, so then who, who has to go, who is still in? Does that mean teachers are now ahead of, we heard that maybe police and fire were going to be ahead, or did they put police and fire at the end of 1A?
Police and fire were in 1A, first responders.
Okay, so states can do whatever, whatever they want, which I kind of knew, but they can also call the groups what they want to. CDC is just a recommendation, okay. That's all I got.
I have two questions and I apologize because I missed the context of the six hundred and twenty-seven. What is that?
So.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I'm sorry. Bellin, Bellin asked us for a list of employees that would be eligible in the 1B group. And we are not able to share employees. Personal information, so we asked employees to opt in. They were given a week to give us their contact information that we then put in an Excel spreadsheet. And securely sent that over to Bellin so that when Bellin opens up their. Registration process and you don't have to be a Bellin. Patient, they have that pre-populated to ease the registration process. And then they can also directly contact their employees so that they know when they are able to start signing up under 1B.
Okay, so is it safe to say or, or state that six hundred and twenty-seven employees signed up for vaccinations?
It's safe to say that six hundred and twenty-seven people were willing to give their information to Bellin. So that they can be contacted when they're eligible to be vaccinated. Whether they follow through and get vaccinated, we don't know that.
Okay, I, so maybe I'll be more clear. What was the ask specifically from the district? Can you restate that?
For contact information to be shared with Bellin so that Bellin could contact them at the point that they're eligible to sign up for the vaccine.
Okay, is that the only communication that the district has given employees regarding vaccination? I guess. Sign up or just any, any sort of possibilities? Has there been other communication? Was that something? Is that the most specific ask?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but the communication was multi-layered. It included information on. Signing up for the Bellin eligibility list. It included information on the VaxPro clinics. It included information on the opportunities through Previa as well as. The opportunities for the various different clinics down in the Fox Valley because our employees live all over. And we wanted to make sure, again. We're, we're just pushing our employees, if they want to get the vaccine, to make sure that you're accessing every possible avenue. To get the vaccine.
Okay, so I guess when I, when I'm asking, if I'm an employee that wants a vaccination, this is the information I want. This is the information that would probably give me the best explanation of what's available to me.
We, we hope it was helpful for employees, but, but yes, the, the email, it was an email, a direct email to employees as well as in the staff scoop.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking this is because I'm trying to nail down. And, and I guess I obviously can't be, because you said we can't know exactly if they get vaccinated, but it is safe to say. The six hundred and twenty-seven employees. Because people have wondered about the number potentially of how many may go through with this because it's not mandatory, we know this. So how many employees would actually sign up? So.
I wouldn't use six hundred and twenty-seven as an indication of how many of our employees want to get vaccinated because. Again, seven hundred and fifty already were vaccinated. We have a, I don't want to say a large amount, but we have a significant amount of employees. Who were eligible in the sixty-five and older.
I guess 1B, I'll, I'll make it easier. 1B out of the 1B group.
I, I wouldn't even say that because they also know that the VaxPro clinics are coming. And we also had employees who, because they weren't Bellin patients, didn't want to go through the Bellin process. So I'm not looking at the six hundred and twenty-seven number as any indication. Of our employees as to what percentage want to get vaccinated.
Do we have any other?
The best way to define the six hundred and twenty-seven is they're people that did not have a previous patient relationship with Bellin. And wanted access to the Bellin platform to make sure that if there was a vaccine available. They were able to get on the list for it. So, because I know I, we actually, this, this was something we experienced directly inside the organization. Bellin sent us the signup, we sent that out. We're getting ready to send it out and as we were getting ready to send it out, we tested it. And when we tested it, we found out that if you did not have. And when we tested it, we found out that if you did not have a Bellin relationship, then you couldn't sign in. And so there were some people in the test group that, boom, they got in no problem because they already had a patient relationship. Others without a Bellin patient relationship couldn't get in. We contacted Bellin and said, hey, we've got these two groups of people. Some don't have a relationship with you, they can't get signed in, what do we do? They said, we need this information. Then Melissa and her team put together this solicitation and said, you know, if, if you don't have that relationship, if you can't sign in on the app, send your information in here. So that tells us, more than anything else, it tells us how many people are non-Bellin patients who would like to access the vaccine through Bellin if it happens to be available there before it is for them at wherever they currently get their, their medical service.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. So as far as VaxPro, do you know, have they received any vaccinations from the state at all?
Well, they vaccinate educational organizations. So they would not be eligible right now to receive vaccines because of the organizations that they vaccinate aren't eligible to receive.
So they just vaccinate public school districts or school districts? They only, okay, that's it?
I, I do think they go into large companies too, Rhonda, not just education organizations. I know for a fact that they did the flu clinic for the Department of Health Services for the state. So they, they do save organizations and large employers.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so I just want to say the, this, this idea that before rolling it out, that you, you test, you tested internally with a, with a small group, detected, detected errors and, and found a solution, that is, that's pretty top-notch. And I think a lot of places might have, in a, just in a hurry to get information out, missed that. So that is a, you know, I know how the complexities of some of these, some of these things can work and to have that forethought of, wait a minute, how does it, is this going to work for everybody? Who might it not work for? And scoping out a fix for that is, is important. And thank you to everyone who did that. I would assume there's a lot of people who maybe are just thinking, I live in the valley, I've been a Theta Clark patient for 10, 20, 30 years. I'll just get on their list and I, I hope if they're watching, get on more than one list. But cancel when you get into one. Because that's, that's important too, because I could see the, the natural tendency might be, hey, when my turn comes up, you know, ThetaCare or Aurora or whomever is going to have it, just, just get on all the lists. So.
Andrew, if I can, if I can jump in there, Andrew, and use that as a platform. CVS, Meyer, Walgreens, they all have apps out there. You can get on their list, you ask, you answer the questions they ask you. It detects from your answers that you are a 1B person and they will add you to that waitlist. So if I could just piggyback on Andrew's comment there and say, hopefully you have, I don't know where my phone is sitting here, hopefully you have all those apps on your phone and you have your information in there. And you'll seize that opportunity. And then again, to echo Melissa and Andrew's comments, we are encouraging people, once you do get that shot, to make sure you get off the list so that those organizations aren't stuck trying to contact you when they could be going to the next person on the list.
Do, do we know for sure, or do we know at all if these retail places, if they are, are we sure that they're correct for Wisconsin's groups? Or you're just encouraging them to use it as an additional option to what else is out there?
They, they have, their individual apps are tailored to the state. You can see that, I've gone through, I think, almost all of them. You can see the questions that are on there and they use the, the exact terminology that the state of Wisconsin is using. So my assumption is, Andrew, without crossing state lines, my guess is they probably built an app for each state and had specific questions in there.
Okay, but still, we want people on the Bellin list in addition to their own providers list. And if a retail store happens to get a shipment sooner, then take it if you get it. And call your other places. Thank you, okay.
All right, any other questions about vaccinations? All right, very good. So that takes us to two other topics that were requested by board members. Getting criteria burden rate and getting criteria return date. There are no presentations or information from any of the staff or administration. So this is an opportunity for any board members to have any discussions around either of those topics.
I'd like to start the discussion now by making a motion. Is that okay? And then if it's seconded, I'd like to make a few comments.
Yep, I'll go to you first.
Okay, that the, I move that the Green Bay area public school district shall commence in-person instruction Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday for 3K through 5th grade on March 1st. A blended instructional model with AB cohorts in grades 6 and 9 on March 1st. And a blended instructional model with AB cohorts in grades 7, 8, 10 through 12 on March 8th. With the week of March 22nd, all students attending virtual and the same models of instruction resuming March 29th. And that the administration shall develop criteria for transition to virtual learning due to transmission of COVID within the district schools.
Okay.
All right, motion has been made by Brenda, seconded by Rhonda. Brenda, I'll let you comment first.
Okay, thanks Eric. So this is a change, obviously, from our last motion. When I voted to, to go with a vaccination, at the time, there were much more optimistic predictions as to when teachers would be on the list. I know at the time, about 22 other states had already been vaccinating their teachers. And in fact, two states were giving their second doses the end of January. When the, when the immunization date was meant, was made as a tentative March 1st, I was incredibly disappointed and felt like waiting until March 29th was too much to ask for so many of our students. And I, you know, this whole pandemic decision-making process has been filled with changes, constant changes, both in data, information, status of, of our hospitals, you know, case burden, all those kinds of things. It has been really difficult to make these decisions. And I think not, there was not a decision we made that would satisfy a majority of our students, our staff, or our families. And I, I, the, the other challenge with making these decisions is that within every single stakeholder group in our district, we have opinions and that are widely variable. People that think we should stay closed, think people that think we should be opening at a gaining criteria of 100. And these wide variations in opinions, like I said, come from every single stakeholder group. It comes from our medical community, it comes from our students, our families of color, it comes from our teachers, it comes from our students, and comes from our, our families and also from our teachers. And as I've made these decisions, I've, I've always tried to, I've been trying to balance, you know, where is the, where is the biggest stress in our district as we move forward? Because it's not just one group that's under stress, it's, it's all over the place. And, and so I, over the last six weeks, I have started to hear from a lot of families whose children have really done well in virtual. They've had great teaching experiences. And I know that, you know, I've said this before, but our teachers have done an amazing job creating community in, in their virtual classrooms. That's a big part of why they've, they've communicated to us that they don't want to lose that community. They'd like to stay with their kids. And so, but, but we got to a point, probably about six weeks ago, where I started hearing from new families who hadn't been contacting us yet, describing all of a sudden over the last, you know, few weeks, how their, their students have just sort of hit the wall. They've reached a point where they just can't, they just aren't functioning well in their virtual instruction. I've had parents talk about their kids all of a sudden having anxiety and panic attacks. There's a line for, for child mental health care. One parent said she called and they are not even giving out appointments because they're so far in advance that they can't get in. I know that opening schools, opening schools on March 1st and also on March 8th for our students, I know that's not going to improve the mental health of all of our students. I also know it's going to increase the stress of our teachers as we ask them to make yet another transition. I'm hopeful that by having the schools be able to figure out the, what instructional models make the most sense for each school, that that will feel, that that will make more sense to the teachers, that they can have a voice in that and they, and they can make that happen. Our numbers are, but I know, so I, I know that, that, that it's not going to magically improve the mental health of all of our students. But just based on what I'm hearing, I feel that this will help a lot of our kids that are to the point of feeling just absolutely hopeless about their education and aren't logging in anymore. Teachers have expressed concern about their students that again, have been doing well and all of a sudden are just sort of sliding downhill. And our numbers are lower. I feel, you know, the, the mitigation strategies we have in place are, are good. I mean, I'm very committed to having a mask policy, as I think Rick Connick said in the beginning, that, that, you know, we're, we're, it's just expected that you will have a mask unless you have a medical condition. I can honestly say, every decision I've made since last summer has been agonizing. I agonize over the decision, the decision before I make it and I agonize over the decision afterward. Because as soon as we make a decision and we maybe solve one problem, a whole new list of challenges arises in every, in every single case. So I know that this seems unfair, especially, I think, to our teachers because we made a decision, a different decision two weeks ago. We're also asking our teachers to come back in three weeks and also asking them to, you know, create this new instructional model so that they're able to keep their classroom together. It's, it's definitely, and again, every decision we've made is the least worst decision. And, and it's, it's, you know, I make these decisions based on what I know today. And I feel like, I just feel like we've reached a tipping point with the, the education of our, of our students. I know there's going to be a lot of people very happy, and again, in all demographic groups. And there's going to be a lot of people that are very unhappy with this, this decision, which will be no different than all the other decisions that we've made. I know that despite the hardships, despite the, the burdens, that there will continue to be incredible work going on in our district as there has been before. I know that our families who also have sacrificed and have worked incredibly hard to support their kids in their virtual education, that they, that they will continue doing what they can to support. I appreciated Melissa Stitz's comments about, you know, parents stepping up and, and asking teachers, you know, what do you need to make this easier for you? So anyway, I just wanted to give that, that background so people kind of know where, where I am and, and why I've decided to change my vote from two weeks ago.
Thank you, Brenda. Rhonda, you seconded the motion, I'd give you the ability if you want to speak next.
Okay, thanks Eric. First, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the Green Bay City Council for taking their time and energy to craft a resolution to support in-person learning in the Green Bay area public school district. I greatly appreciate that and I just wanted to mention that. I'm planning to support this motion and these are the reasons why. Not that long ago, at the last meeting, I posed the question and I asked the district if they were ready to go with regards to PP and mitigation implementations of strategies and equipment, and they told us they were. The burden rate and the hospitalizations are down significantly. Elect, elect, I'm sorry, elective surgeries are actually back on again, that's a good sign as well. While some students, and Brenda mentioned this as well, are doing okay. Some might even be doing great with virtual learning. We know that far too many are struggling with mental health issues and academically. No one believes and has stated that mental health issues will be cured by this change or these options. But we do know there is science and research behind overload of screen time. There's a science and research behind isolation. There's science and research behind being sedentary, right? And this probably could be for staff and students as well. So it is, it's hard to deny that putting kids into a situation every day where the things that are, are not proven not good for you, it's, it's going to help them to pull them out of that state. I mean, your phone tracks screen time for a reason, right? Your, your cellphone does. So I believe that they deserve better because many students are just done. Also, it's important that we recognize that there are a lot of families leaving the district. And this matters because it greatly affects our financial ecosystem. And that, that should, that should be very concerning to all of us, everyone. Wherever you are on, on this, on this topic. It will affect, affect our sustainability and potentially our future referendum. So I'm, I'm happy to, to know that we are going to take a step and present something better for students. Thank you.
Eric, I'm sorry, can I just share my screen to make sure that I have the motion correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Brenda, I'll ask that you unmute and just compare what you said to what Beth has typed.
And Brenda, what I'd like clarification on is just to make sure the 3K through 5th grade on March 1st is correct.
Yes, that's correct. And then 1, 8, 4, 6, and 9, March 1st. And then everybody else in secondary on March 8th. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Andrew.
So I, I think this could be done with unanimous consent. Otherwise, I would have to move it as an amendment. I'm going to be consistent with my statements I've made so far that any date-based return must have an emergency trigger for COVID. So I will either see if there's unanimous consent to add to the motion that an emergency board meeting will be scheduled if the burden rate exceeds 600 cases per 100,000 per two weeks in Brown County. So I can move that, or Eric, if you're prerogative, I think you could ask if there's unanimous consent to add that to the motion, we wouldn't have to go through the vote.
Sure, Andrew, can I just ask, last time you made that amendment or that suggestion or put that in your motion, it was 1,000 and now you're changing it to 600?
It's, 1,000 was based on where we were at the time. And a 6, 600 would now be a more than, more than doubling and rate of increases is important. I said last time, 1,000 was outside of what we hit and it's also, also part of the compromise here is it's, it triggers, it triggers a meeting. It doesn't force an automatic closure. But it, it triggers a meeting. I think if we, if I, if we were to see ourselves double from where we're at today, something has gone not according to plan here as more and more. not according to plan here as more and more people are getting vaccinated. Um, I also looked here and of, if you exclude the, um, it tended to be Monday was the day that they would have been reporting from Sunday and there were often zeros or single digits. Um, if you exclude those, we haven't had, uh, it's, it's something like, it's something like five out of the seven lowest days of new cases since August have been all this week. Uh, the fir-, it's the first time we've had individual day, single day new cases of twenty, not counting the weird reporting on Monday. We haven't seen, we haven't seen numbers like twenties. I mean, I'm going back to the, the very beginning of the, the pandemic and so at this point, I'm comfortable saying I would not want to wait for a thousand to have that emergency board meeting. At the time, it was about a doubling of where we were at and it's the same here. It's about a doubling of where we're at.
Okay, but, thank you. Uh, uh, go ahead, Brenda. Uh, yeah.
Is that, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would, um, go along with the six hundred. I think, um, because there's the, this question mark of this new strain also, um, it's hard to predict if it'll show up and act the same as it has in other places. But, um, that gives us a little, you know, um, a little lower rate at which to, to, um, to have, or a little, little lower case burden rate at which to make, make sure we're having a meeting. And that doesn't mean we can't have a meeting sooner if there's, you know, concern, um, about that, but, uh, um, I'm comfortable with the six hundred.
Is there anyone opposed to Andrew's amendment? Is that, you're saying you're a polls lawyer? Do you want to speak? I'm sorry, I missed.
I want to speak.
Oh, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
So here we are again, and I, I, I can't get past, um, basically breaking a promise, which is to, um, get our teachers vaccinated before we bring them back into, uh, schools. Hundred is too high. I won't, I won't, um, I won't support that. And, um, I mean, if anybody is watching the news, um, these variants are going to be here in a matter of weeks. And they will overtake the current strain that we have here. And I haven't seen anything that contradicts that yet. Um, they're thirty-five to forty-five percent more transmissible and, um, and more virulent. So I, I just can't, I can't support this. Uh, we, we, we made a promise to our teachers. We gave up a, a reasonable gating criteria, um, in order to do that. So, um, I'm, the, the six hundred is too high and I, I can't support that. Sorry.
So, uh, I just, I want to make sure that we address Andrew's amendment. So it looks like Andrew that will need to, uh, have you make an official motion and someone second it and vote on the amendment. So I'll let you make that.
Um, I move to amend the motion by adding the following. Um, an emergency board meeting uh, shall occur if the Brown County case burden exceeds six hundred cases per hundred thousand residents over the last fourteen days. Yeah. I'm okay with there being a, I'm okay with there being a period after that, I think. Although I was thinking about whether, and I'm, I'm trying to, trying to have some simplicity here, um, and I, I, I don't, I don't think we'll hit it, but yeah, so there we go. The, it triggers an emergency, an emergency meeting and by I, the word emergency is in there for a reason because we have provisions to call emergency meetings quickly. Um, so, yeah. So I have moved that as an amendment.
Is there a second to Andrew's amendment?
Second.
Okay. Beth, uh, how would you like to vote on the amendment?
I can open up online voting.
Okay. So just taking a vote on Andrew's amendment of adding, uh, language of, uh, emergency meeting triggered at, uh, six hundred burden rate.
Perfect. An online voting has been opened.
I, I don't see it, Beth. I, or I have too many windows open.
I don't see mine either.
I don't see it either.
I just refreshed my screen. Could you try again?
Hey, you might have to refresh.
Oh, there is.
Is it? Okay.
I, I had to refresh and rejoin the meeting.
Yeah. If you're still struggling, you can just let Beth know and she can enter your vote for you.
Perfect. All online votes have been entered and the motion carried with all board members voting in favor. Laura?
Um, that isn't correct. I voted no.
Okay. I'm changing your vote right now. So if the motion still carried with all board members, with the exception of McCoy voting in favor.
So the amendment passed five to one. All right, so now the motion, uh, is as originally made with that amendment on the table. Are there any other comments from the board? Don, I wanted to, did, is your hand up, Don?
Yeah, and so what, what would this do to the vaccine clinic? Were those during the week?
We are, we're, we will have to find a different location for March fourth.
Okay.
And if teachers are going to be in, in person, um, rather than teaching virtually, it may make it, uh, we're going to have to look at the hours and make sure that we have enough variety of hours so that teachers are able to leave during their prep or, um, other times or find coverage for their classes so they're able to get in to get the vaccine.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so as far as I'm concerned, in my individual opinion as an independent elected official and one who generally likes to see a little bit more board hand in the, the big stuff, I can say for my part, if one, if the thing that got massive numbers of vaccinations done was one building being all virtual for one a extra day in a week to get this done and that was the way to do it, I certainly wouldn't be opposed and I would consider a single day intervention to be, in my opinion, an administrative prerogative, um, you know, not a, oh, I think a week I'd want to bounce off the board, but a, a, one additional day. Although I do think there's other big spaces that might, you know, might be even better and might even be more, more central. Um, I also, I also really hope that there is a, I guess I, I considered whether or not we should have in the motion that would guarantee time, you know, being able to have that release time. Uh, an elementary teacher's prep time will not, will barely get them across the street and back. I mean, it's just a function of how the, the day is, is built, so. Um, do we need to do, if we're concerned about that and want to make it official, do we need to, you know, do we need to make a, a motion? Or do our existing leave policies cover such things?
Well, Andrew, our, our goal is to get as many people vaccinated as possible. So we'll do gymnastics in order to get staff to the vaccination.
Well, of course you will, of course you will, but I, I guess people, I mean, someone, I, I don't know, I could see someone wondering about, geez, I know how it is at my building and two people are out on, on quarantine and I just don't want to, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take one for the team. I can get in next week at CVS or something. I want people, I want everyone to take it when they can get it and I want people who aren't teachers to take it when they can get it. And I want, right, I want everyone to take it when they get it. So as long as our communication is, you know, whatever, you know, whatever it takes. I mean, I will, a- as a last, as a last resort, because I want everyone to get the paid work that they want, I, I will sub for free for a day and work it out with my employer. I mean, if it's all hand, whatever we can do to make that happen and to make people not have to be worried about, um, you know, I don't want, I want everyone making the right decision for themselves. And I know we have some very selfless people who might think I'll, I'll wait till the CVS app or something and I want people to know that we want them to take the vaccine because that's what we're all, that's what we all want.
We, we've already communicated with teachers and hourly staff that they do not need to take leave time to go get the vaccine if it's during their workday. That they can do, they can work it out with their principal for the coverage and they do not need to take leave time. We've also communicated that if they have an adverse reaction that is similar to what, um, the adverse reactions are being reported right now and they are unable to report to work the next day, they will get one COVID paid day for each shot. So if there's two shots, you'll get a, a day, um, that you don't have to use your sick leave and you will get a paid day. So a- again, we've been very, very, very supportive of our staff. We will do whatever we can to make sure there's coverage and we'll, we'll have to work around what the board's plan is. It, it makes it much more complicated to get a thousand staff members vaccinated in two days, but we will make it work.
All right, um, other comments from the board? Go ahead, Laura.
So I'm not willing to sit here and pretend that this pandemic is winding down and that we can just assume that there's, with some creating scheduling and lots of cleaning and lots of PPE, um, that we can, you know, quote unquote, stop living in fear and inch back into normal. Um, I'm also not willing to pretend that politics or pressure tactics aren't at play here as well. Um, and I'd just like to acknowledge as all the, our, all board members know, that we are hearing also from, uh, we're hearing from one side very loudly, but there is a very large quiet group of parents and students and staff that don't have access to the power. And I'm, just want to remind anyone watching that that those voices are equal and every bit as important as the voices that we've been hearing. There are a lot of people who hold complicated and nuanced positions about sending students back into buildings. And, and, you know, we've been hearing from them in droves every day. And this, you know, this has never been a black and white issue. It's always, always been complicated. But this is what we're doing now. We're sending our teachers back, our staff back, when a whole bunch of them still aren't vaccinated. We told them we were going to wait for the, for that to happen and now we're reneging on that. I don't know what to say to those people now. Um, you know, this, I find this just really, really hard. And, uh, I don't know, I don't know what to say to those people other than I'm sorry because it looks like this is going to pass. So that's all.
Go ahead, Andrew. Then we'll go to Noah.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, and this, this is a little, this is a little uncharacteristic for me and I spent a few minutes on whether I want to, wanted to say the shot, but I'm going to say it. Um, I just want to say, and people, people can confirm that I've said this and I know um, Laura, on issues, you and I have not necessarily seen eye to eye on a lot of issues, including this. I, I know you drew the line in a much, much lower place at all stages of this and I, I respect your opinion that, that difference from mine. I, I sincerely do and I have told people in the community that. I, I knew that this, you know, and I said very early on in this process, there was probably no, there was probably no COVID return plan and no gating criteria that could truly honestly get a seven, a seven to zero vote in the interest of balancing the important factor of COVID safety and the, and the important factor of getting kids, getting kids back into, back into school and I have, I have done my, I have done my best. I, we all hear from the same people at the board table, but I have reached out in- intentionally to people on, on both sides and done the best I could. I've, I've heard from both sides and I, I understand that a lot of, a lot of people might be disappointed in, in me tonight, but it's, it's the best balance. It's the best balance I can reach and being tied to a, being tied to a third, a third party as we saw, lended itself to a lot of attempts at reinterpretation by people to make it, to make it fit their side. Um, so that's, that's where I'm at, but I did, I did want to say whether, whether it's important or not, I, I respect the opinion of a when it's, when it's different from mine and it's, it's sincere and I know your, I know yours is.
Thank you, Andrew.
Go ahead, Noah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, after delivering more than a lifetime's worth of, um, of, uh, you know, speeches and or rants on, on the coronavirus and reopening from, from my seat as an ICSC president, uh, now that I have a motion in front of me, uh, I'll, I'll keep it brief. Um, so I, I do support the motion that's, that's in front of us, um, right now as it is. I, I think for, for a lot of people, um, i- if this passes, the, the end is in sight. And I do want to concur with, um, some of the things that I, that Dr. Warren said. I feel like some, there has been a, a fairly steep increase in the amount of people actually asking, you know, me, me, what's going on and stuff and saying how desperate they are in the situation. I think the, the coronavirus is, I mean, yeah, the new strains are scary to me and the fact that there is, that there even still is, that there's a pandemic going on and I, I'm not going to deny that. It's real. Um, it is, is, is scary, but I, I think we're in a, I think this is really in a kind of a good place. And that's never the exciting answer. That's never the answer that you can go fire up a, a partisan base with. I'm not accusing any board member of that. I'm just putting out, putting it out there. You know, it's not, perhaps the motion in front of us isn't, isn't the real exciting, you know, return to school or, 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 uh, always focused on safety. It, it is a compromise, I think. And I actually respect that. I think that's important. Um, I think it's important that all sides came together. all sides came together to try to come up with the best solution possible. I think this works for students. This meets the concerns I've heard. I don't represent the staff and I trust you guys far more than I would on myself on that. So I, I won't comment on it. Um, that's, that's above my pay grade. But from the student level, um, having the dates clearly here is something that the people who are, are really struggling with this and are really not doing well with virtual, they can look forward to a date where they will be back in school and it's not done through, um, administrative action that is hopefully gonna remain. It's not, it, it's solidified. It's here. It's voted on by the board. Um, I know, yeah, the March 29th date was floating around, but students who aren't necessarily as, uh, what's a good word, like policy nerds as much as I am, uh, still understood that that was, there's a difference when the board votes on a date. And then what's in front of us right now is important. I do think that having a stopgap, if the coronavirus gets very out of control again is, that's reasonable. That's right. It, crazy stuff can happen. We have new strains coming around and it's a pandemic. So it's not a, it's not a situation you can be fully prepared for. Um, uh, about a month and a half or two months ago, I really can't remember when it was. Um, Vice President Braden Freiber gave a much better speech than I ever have. And one of his points actually was that some students' school wasn't the safe haven that you might have been hearing about. I think that's a fair point. I just wanted to very briefly touch on that. That's true. Some students don't feel safe at school. That's a reality. Some don't. Some, and I, I, I have no problem admitting that. And I'm very glad that the board has chosen a direction, at least with this motion and with, with what we've heard so far with the COVID planning and, and all that, that allows for students to and families to choose to remain, uh, all virtual instead of entering into the blended or onsite options. I think that's important. I think that covers the different, uh, situations that students might be in, you know, with, with grandparents in the house who are at higher risk or other high risk folks in the house or students who just generally never felt safe at school and are excelling right now. Cause I, I have friends that are doing great. And I'm glad that they have the chance for that. Um, and as, as was briefed and touched, and I think this, one good thing to come out of this pandemic is, is once coronavirus is, is gone, COVID is gone, uh, the opportunities for virtual learning, I really hope the district can stay with that, uh, long after I'm gone on ICSC. Um, that, that the district will look into these options. And I'm glad that that's, that has been developed and I'm glad that kids are doing great with it right now. So in summary, um, I support the motion in front of us. I think it's what's gonna work best for students that can pass. I think this, this should be a win for, for the people who have, um, been very concerned in, in reaching out even to me. And, um, I, I really hope the board, um, does, does what I believe to be the right thing tonight and passes this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Noah. Go ahead, Laura.
Good time to, um, I don't know, whether it's Steve or Vicky, would like to, uh, give everyone a little reminder about what our sub, um, our ability to hire subs is like right now.
So I pull myself up mute here. Uh, so one of the things that I can share with you is, uh, Terry has been working diligently. I'll check and see if I see her on the screen, cause I don't wanna steal too much of her thunder. So, uh, Terry, I'll let you, uh, jump in, but um, she and her team have been working diligently on the substitute onsite process and she can bring you up to speed uh, on some of the work that they've done there and, and where it's really gonna provide some opportunities for us, uh, in weeks and months to come.
Thanks, Steve. I'm really excited, um, about our ability to provide our first ever uh, DPI eligible licensing substitute course. We had an amazing amount of response. We had a hundred and thirty-eight individuals sign up to take that, um, course that we are providing. I'm very concerned about the change in timeline because there will be no way that we can get them through the licensing and hiring process in time for them to provide the support that we were hopeful for. Um, but I am very excited and optimistic about the number that we have, um, eligible and the support that we've designed to put them through the hiring process. It's a great sign to have that many people signed up and interested. We have been working on, um, individual and personal communications with all of our existing substitutes to find out who is willing to come onsite. As I'm sure many of you know already, mu- many of our substitutes are, um, older and, uh, former employees of the district, for example, retirees or have just completed, um, working for us and are going to be entering into their emeritus. Um, many have indicated that they are willing to help us onsite once they have been vaccinated. So there again, um, we have data and we have knowledge of who is eligible to come onsite or willing to come onsite and we will begin calling and arranging for, um, their substitute. We are going to move to a site-based substitute plan so that we are helping to mitigate spread and we are able to, um, keep them helping to, to cover for quarantine, et cetera. We have increased our daily rate of pay and have a, um, great plan to, um, be competitive in the market. We've done a lot of work in the area of substitute sourcing for actually several years now. And, um, I'm very grateful. Lori Blakesley and her team have done an amazing job getting information out. Um, Rita and Sheri and Jenny have done an incredible job in planning this course and making sure we meet DPI requirements. And the entire HR team has been working really hard to make sure that we are hiring and sourcing, pre-hiring and working to make sure that we are, um, filling our vacancies.
Sixty would have been impressive, Terry. And you, one thirty-eight, one thirty-eight.
One thirty-eight as of, um, Friday at noon. Correct. We will be offering a second, um, opportunity as well as we continue. You know, there, we've spoken about the national shortage on substitutes and the work, um, that's happening across all of the states, including our own. And we did, uh, engage in the Centers Grant, the national, um, work and that has positively impacted, um, our efforts and some of the proactive things that we've been working on in a time where there's substitute shortages across the nation. So I'm really excited. One thirty-eight is an incredible number. And we also have a, a good number of our existing subs in our pool that are really anxious to get back and have opportunities to work with those students.
Really glad to hear that. I really am. Um, also Steve, can you give, um, maybe give an update here about how this will affect food, our food service?
Yeah, Pete's on here too. So I, I can defer to Pete to, uh, to give us an update on that. Uh, but, uh, one of the things that, uh, I think, uh, many of you are probably well aware of, uh, Lynette does an awesome job working with, uh, with our team, uh, and obviously, uh, we plan very far in advance. And so, uh, she's been working forward uh, that, uh, knowing, uh, past board actions, uh, has certainly influenced, uh, the food orders that she's placed. Uh, and, uh, what we'll be prepared to deliver to students as they return to campus. Pete, you wanna give them a quick update on that?
Sure, that's, uh, you kinda stole my thunder. Uh, Lynette has done a fantastic job for the entire year, her whole team has. And we certainly appreciate the hard work of our teachers as well as the hard work of parents uh, that have, that have, uh, worked so hard to make this the least, uh, you know, eventful, positive, negative, eventful situation we have with this pandemic. Pandemic has been something that's been global. It's affected us all. It's affected our vendors with respect to, um, getting food in for the district. So Lynette had, based on previous board action, um, contacted vendors to have food available for the twenty-ninth, uh, during our conversation of last week. Uh, we decided that she would be, um, it would be wise for her to move that up. So she did move that up. So, uh, we will be having food coming in, um, you know, to support the, the, the first start date. Having said that, I, I do have to say though, because of some internal transfer within the district, uh, that, that we do provide our employees opportunities for advancement within the school district. And that did occur recently with respect to, uh, getting some contact tracing positions filled. So Lynette is down in food service with a few individuals. And normally that's something that she can handle with the pool, sub pool that she has. Uh, but because we're providing both, uh, lunches to children that would be onsite as well as lunches to children that will be offsite, it will be a, um, very taxing, uh, job for food service, uh, and they'll work as hard as they can to do the best job that they can. But it's not gonna be perfect.
All right, um, I'll make some comments really quick. Um, I wanna to re- repeat things that people already said. Um, reiterating to, to Brenda, every decision that we've had to make going back to July, um, has been agonizing. Um, and that's regardless of, of what position or how you voted as a board member. Situation has evolved immensely. Um, you know, while some people are probably frustrated that we have changed, uh, decisions and directions over the course of the last eight months. Um, you know, I, I feel like, uh, it's always been driven by new, meaningful, impactful information. Um, two things that I've wrestled with, the first is, has been equity. Um, given my professional work, it's, it's, uh, in my background and experiences, it's been something that, uh, it's always been a driver in my decision-making. It has been in this process. The problem is, is that, uh, we didn't live in an equitable society before this pandemic started. And the pandemic certainly hasn't done, um, hasn't had an equitable impact on people. And you've seen the analogy, you know, we're not all in the same boat. We're in the same storm and some of us are in different boats. And I think that, that, that applies to many students in our, in our district. Um, at the same time, I know that many of our, our students aren't in equitable situations at home with virtual learning. And so on one hand, I can argue equity and on the other hand, uh, you know, and I've had that debate with people sort of spinning around. Um, and trying to understand what equity looks like here. Um, the other piece that I think we've struggled with as a board and certainly as a community is, uh, our definition of safety. I've said that we all um, want students to be back in person. And where we disagree and where our community disagrees is what, what does it mean to be safe? And, uh, there are pretty far extremes on both ends of that. And we've heard from plenty of people, many, many people um, expressing their own definition of safety. And I think that our board is, is appropriately reflected our society and that, that we are all in different places and, and we're elected to represent the community. I think that's what's made some of these board meetings so difficult is that, uh, it's hard to, to get four people to build consensus, uh, on something when we all have our own individual opinions. So as each of us take this vote, um, I, I think that it's with our own definition of safety in mind and, and sort of where is that, that tipping point? And, um, so I, I, I think that that reflects that. I am appreciative of, uh, the board and their work through this process. It's, uh, been difficult from my position and I, I know that it's been difficult for each of you as well. So, um, just, I respect everybody and, um, this isn't the end by any means. Um, we'll have many more hard decisions, uh, facing us. So those are the only things that I wanted to say. Um, any last minute comments before we have Beth take the vote? Go ahead, Rondo.
Would you be able to read the motion before we vote, please?
Absolutely.
Would you be able to put it up by any chance? Just, I wanna, I wanna get a picture of it.
Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Perfect. So it's this portion. This is the amendment that Andrew had passed.
All right, Beth, uh, when you're ready, I think you can open online voting.
That's great. Online voting has been opened.
Beth, mine isn't coming up for, it's, I don't know. I'm obvious, I'm yes. I'm yes.
Thank you. Our votes have been entered and the motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as followed. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, no. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Sitnakow, yes. McCoy, no.
All right, motion carries forty-two. All right, um, carrying on, we have a, a number of, uh, action items. Uh, Brenda, if you'd be willing to make the motions uh, for us in each of these, uh, anyone is willing, that's willing to second would be great. And then, uh, we'll have any discussion that's necessary.
All right, the first action item, I moved the pro- proposed policy and rule update to four, five, three point three five base coverings as a health and safety measure as presented via approved.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I support the policy. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, is this, is this being done with, is a, a work session plus, which we had, plus work session and then vote at the regular is, is sufficient for policy? Or is this an emergency waiver?
We followed the board policy on what's required to pass a policy for this. It went to the work session. And now we're at the regular meeting.
Okay, so work session plus one is the standard. It's not the, okay, there, there was a time where it was a waiver to, it was a waiver to allow it with just even one work session in, in a meeting, but now policy is just one, one and one. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we changed the policy probably four or five years ago.
Probably when, probably when you weren't here, Andrew, those couple of years you had off.
No, probably not, if it was only four or five.
It was, we redid the one hundred series. Um, I think you and former board member Dorf worked on all those policies. So probably four or five years ago.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Um,
Go ahead, Brenda. Yep.
So I'm wondering, there's, there's one more in the policy and it's in the rule. Um, under five C four. Um, and, and actually it relates up to five C two. Um, I'm concerned by the, the word repeated failure. Um, and I'm just wondering if, if we can tighten that up. Um, I mentioned at the last board meeting that, I mean, this is a, um, a huge safety concern and also something that I don't wanna see, um, our teachers having to battle with the, the same student over and over, same with our administrators. Um, so I don't know if the board would be amenable to changing that to, um, um, I mean, just, just, uh, I don't know. I, I feel like one, one ask, um, per day of a student to put their face mask on, um, should be all we have to do. Um, I mean, I realize there's some nuances to this, but, um, um, but anyway, I just, I, I feel like it needs to be clear that, that this is an expectation and, um, we're not gonna give two, you know, three, four, And we're not going to give two, you know, three, four, five second chances day after day. To students that are just being defiant and taking their masks off. I mean, I'm assuming, I'm hoping that most of our students will, will wear their masks. You know, I think our students are going to understand the importance of that. But I do know, as our speaker pointed out, that I've heard that there has been chatter of. They're sort of ramping up for refusal to wear masks. So anyway, I just point, point that out. I don't know if board members want to consider changing that. The other word up, up above is when other available. Mitigations. Mitigation techniques have been exhausted. And that word also makes it sound like we're going to keep doing this over and over again.
Is there any reaction or any feedback to Brenda's? Suggestion?
Not opposed, but I need to know what the replacement is.
I'm, I'm just wondering about eliminating repeated.
Yeah, I think you can do that. And I think there's a common sense that a second ask in a week that's respected immediately is not. What we're after here. Yeah, I'm okay with him to have repeated. So it'd probably have to be unanimous consent to get rid of repeated or an amendment.
Can you just clarify, Brenda, repeated in C four, the.
Yeah, I'd like it to say, a student may be assigned to the district's virtual program for failure or refusal to wear a face covering as is permitted by district policy.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm clear with the board's expectation. And so based on this language, a one-time refusal to wear a face mask could result in a student being assigned to the virtual program.
Yeah, thank you for asking that, Melissa. We'll, we'll need clear clarification on what the board's intent is.
We're trying to, I think, Brenda, you're trying to not provide an out for someone to say, ah, it's not repeated yet. It's only four. It's not repeated yet. Oh, he put it on on Friday. Now we start over. It's not repeated till Wednesday and he wore it Tuesday. That kind, I mean. Unfortunately, unfortunately, that's. You know, like I said, I don't. There are. I would. You know, I guess someone could. I mean, someone, someone couldn't, someone could make their, you know, make their case to us and ask, ask us to. Explore it if, if, or go up the, go up the ladder of authority if they think the policy was. Miss, misapplied, but I hope there's some room for. You know, there's some room for common sense here that repeated. Repeated doesn't mean a second time this, this week where it was respected right away. And it doesn't mean somebody has a hard time keeping a mask and it takes time to find one. I would hope it can be just worked out and be handled reasonably without. As someone who likes to add rules and guardrails, I hope we don't need one here because I don't know how you would. Craft it.
My, my personal preference here is to just leave it. It's a brand new policy, something that we've never had to consider before as a district. If there are major issues between the implementation of the policy and the way that it's actually written. I'm sure the administration will come back and say, hey, we didn't think of this. This policy isn't just made up. We've used it with other districts. So it's my inclination to support it as is and. You know, try, you know, put our administration in charge of continuing to do what they do and put students' needs first while also following board policy. Gives them the backbone if a student isn't wearing a mask and if modifications are needed. Once this gets implemented, we're dealing with a lot of hypotheticals right now. So that would be my inclination right as we are here today.
And I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I mainly just want to make sure we're. I guess that the board is behind the note, the, the. Opinion that, that this is not, that, you know, wearing a mask is not that hard. We're not going to fight about this over and over and over again. We do have an option if it's too much, it's, it's too difficult for you to wear a mask that you can go back into virtual. And now that we have students staying, staying with their same teachers, then, you know, going back and forth. From virtual to, to the in-person instruction will be more seamless.
Brenda?
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Okay, I just want to go on record because for some reason it's out there that I don't support masking. Which is interesting, but I do absolutely 100%. I do it myself, six to eight hours a day everywhere I go in public, so I support this. Fully. Thank you.
Okay, was the motion seconded? It was. Okay, go ahead, Noah.
Thanks, I'll keep it brief. So I'm just trying, there's so many documents here, sorry if I'm on the wrong one. I think I'm on the rule. Under section two subsection A, sub subsection six. I'm trying to, I'm just trying to like get a kind of a feel for, I get what discuss here to be different than what's, you know, actually implemented, but. So like. When students are outdoors on district property during regular school or equivalent dismissal times, like if I walk to school. Should you put it on the second you cross over school grounds? Is that where it's going to be enforced? You know what I'm saying? Like, I'm just trying to understand what the, kind of the intent was behind writing it. Because I don't, I don't know, to me, like, I feel like people aren't going to probably have them on until they get close to the school building. Because like, there's parts of West where you're on school property, but you're still walking, you're still clearly walking to the building. So I feel like it's going to be likely that people won't have them on at that time. Is that going to be a problem? I'm just kind of asking to kind of understand what that policy means.
Oh, I missed what section you were referring to.
I might have too. Section two subsection A, sub subsection six.
In the rule.
The rule?
Yep.
Thank you.
Noah, there, there won't be administrators patrolling the outskirts of district property to ensure masks are being worn. I think that's what you're asking about.
That's the gist of it. Okay, thank you. Then can I make a general comment, Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, in general, I mean. There's, there's clear scientific benefit to this. It's, it's kind of, it's kind of dropped dead obvious and, and. I, my advice to people who, like, this is not the one to go to war over. That was the last vote. I mean, this is an easy one. If people just wear masks, operate with this one. For school purposes, it will keep schools safer. And it'll get us back and keep, keep the burden rates from, from increasing too high when we, when we do get back. So yeah, I would encourage, encourage the board to, encourage the board to approve this. It's a good idea. It's kind of, it's kind of obvious at this point. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll leave it there.
All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, Beth, open it up.
Online voting has been opened. Brenda, do you want me to enter it?
Yeah, I just, when I, I have my agenda on my phone and the meeting on my laptop. And for some reason, my internet goes weird on my phone when I do that. So I'm, I'm a yes. Sorry.
Thank you. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carried six to zero. Brenda, you want to keep going? Oh, you're on mute, I'm sorry.
I move that the resolution for authorization and appointment of an independent hearing officer as presented be approved.
I'll second.
All right, motion has been made, seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead, Andrew.
I am reluctantly willing to agree to this for the remainder of this academic year. Only because we've been put in a ridiculous situation by a, by a previous. A previous administration's. Decision to, let's, let's face it, to, to. Downgrade the seriousness with which sexual assault is, is treated. To. Provide. Unusually. Unusually generous methods for people who engage in certain kinds of misconduct to delay disciplinary action. And to create training requirements that maybe would make it impossible for school districts to do. What they need to do. If I'm, if I'm still around, I look forward to a more. Robust discussion of this next year when hopefully there's been some more clarification about. What the current administration will do as far as non-enforcement. I do realize that non-enforcement doesn't solve all problems. However, it's.
Andrew, we lost you.
I just, I want to clarify while he's getting his audio back on that when he says administration not taking sexual assault seriously. He doesn't refer to Green Bay area public school administration.
A previous, a previous federal administration, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't hear the beginning of what you said, but I was assuming it was just the start of saying that I didn't mean our administration. Yes, a previous federal administration. Where a new, new federal administration has, I believe, at least made some comments about problems with how the previous one was, was done.
Thank you.
Of course, of course. Sorry about that, my, my head's a-died. In the interest of time, I was, I was going to make a motion to add the line. That this is not intended to be precedent setting, but I will settle for making my. Position very clear that I think there's more to it. I think that we have a role in. I think sometimes a district has a role in resisting decisions made above our head that are bad policy. And. But for right now, for something that carries us through the remainder of the academic year for emergency situations, I will. Live with it. I appreciate the fact that any expulsion would be ordered by a independent hearing officer would be. Fully reviewable at the transcript level by board members if they wanted to, so that I do feel. I do feel better about that. I certainly would want to, if I'm continuing on the board, I'd want to do much more research and look at the larger issues with districts. And talk to board members at places who are using it. But I guess we have no choice this time.
Rhonda?
Thanks. Is it going to be written into the motion? How will we know when we're going, I mean, this is for the rest of the school year. Is it written in the motion? How, how will we come back to this to review it? To make sure we do, or to make sure the board does, if for some reason.
It expires, it expires by law, right, Melissa? If we, if we don't, and is it correct, if we didn't renew it by July first, we would be at board decides by default by statute.
Correct. If by law, it can only be effective for the school year in which it is passed.
Okay. So sunset language isn't needed here because by law it sunsets automatically.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Noah.
Thank you. So I, in the interest of, you know, trying to keep representing as many students as I could, I looked into what other, kind of how this works in other districts. Yeah, I, I would, when it was first proposed, before some of these ten or nine changes took effect. I certainly thought it was a, was completely opposed to it. Under the current system, I think honestly, probably the fairest thing for students is to pass it for right now. I don't know if I'm going to say that about, if I would say that about next year. Thankfully for you all, I'll be gone by the time that vote comes around, but for right now, I think it's probably. The most, the most beneficial thing you can do for students is to pass it just because of the amount of shenanigans that's required to hold a fair hearing. Without having the hearing officer. I do hope that if this situation arises, that board members do take that opportunity they have to review the transcript or, and if not that, to review. As much of that material as they can. So that it's not just, it's coming out of the hearing officers' report, but it's also individual board members still keeping their stake. In those votes, because those are really important votes, as I'm sure you all know. And they, they have a big effect on students. And so I really do hope that the board keeps its, its role. Alive and well, even if some, some federal level rulemaking has made it that this is kind of must pass at this point. So I think the fairest thing to do, vote yes tonight, do your diligence as board members, please, if anything does come up. From here until you have to renew it. And then when that renewal vote comes around, I bet, I would say there probably is some more scrutiny that should be applied to this and. And what, what the board is able to realistically accomplish as far as those training requirements and things. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any other discussion here? All right, Beth, open it up.
Online voting has been opened.
Beth?
What would you like to vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you, Beth. All right, last one here, Brenda, and this is just a rule in reference to the IHO.
Move that the proposed policy update to four forty seven point seven, rule two, alternative expulsion hearing procedure as presented be approved.
Any discussion? All right, Beth?
Online voting has been opened.
Yes.
Thank you. Great. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, pass six to zero. Okay, so that takes us on then to. To Beth's board meeting schedule. We have a work session scheduled for the 22nd. Just a reminder, we're meeting again next Monday, the 15th to have a discussion around. The applications that we've received for the open board seat. We will be here next Monday for that discussion. Again, we're not interviewing there. It's just a matter of looking at who's applied and figuring out. Who we will interview. So that'll be on the 15th and then a work session on the 22nd. Last thing then is future agenda items. Any items that board members have that they would like us to consider for upcoming agendas other than things we've already mentioned? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thank you. I'm looking to see when we might revisit the school start time task force recommendations. that we, we spent quite a bit of time on last year and it was put on hold and have had a lot of people asking about that. And we know that based on the recommendations of the task force and the conversation that it definitely helps support the whole child. And I think we're going to need that moving forward as much as possible. So just wondering if that would be something we could look at revisiting in the near future.
Yeah, absolutely. A lot of that work, all of that work has been done before Superintendent Merle has come on. So I'll follow up with him and Brenda about that work and see when, when it makes sense to bring that back.
I also have, sorry, wrote it down. When are we, we voted to send students and staff back in person. When are we meeting in person as a board?
Yeah, so that's a good question. I've been talking with Steve about that as well. So part of it was a techno, technology investment that we needed to make in order to be in person and also live stream at the same time. And then also another consideration is if we're meeting in person and then allowing public to come and visit in person and then what happens from a social distancing perspective? So I will get an update on where we are with that. Certainly Josh and Steve, if you have anything, but we'll, more information to come definitely soon.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing anything else, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, pass six zero, and that is the end of our board meeting. Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school districts website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.